He threatened me. I usually try to avoid having to say the prayer of the play, you know.
And a synchronizer watches, but I have six o'clock PM on April 27th. Welcome out to Parowan City Council and for being here to help participate in the decisions and business of the city. It's great to have you here and we'll begin this evening with an opening prayer and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Jed Sudwigs.
Our Heavenly Father, we come before Thee in prayer at the beginning of this City Council meeting. We ask Thy Spirit to be with us, that we would do our best to do the things that are in the best interests of our community. We pray for wisdom and we pray for Thy guidance and we say this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thanks Jed.
Okay, council, do you have a declaration of conflicts with or personal interest in any of the agenda items?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
I do, Mayor. Um, one in the warrant register, my business did work for the city truck. Um, I do have a contract with the state for all Iron County, um, so I will abstain on that one warrant item, but vote for the rest of them.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, on approving the meeting's agenda, I would like to make one adjustment to it. Um, and I would recommend that we move Reefs Across America to share with us that program before public comments, just because they're here and might not want to be here and I have a feeling there are a few people here tonight that want to say some things and then they can stay or they can go. Um, we don't have Chris Wiltse here yet. He is coming from Salt Lake, so he could walk in the door at any minute, in fact, he just did. And so, he will, he will come after Reefs Across America and I'd also like to recognize, um, Councilman Scott Phillips here tonight, Cedar City Council. So, Chris, do you want a minute to settle and have, well, we have to vote on it first, so we'll go there if the council, uh, we have a motion to approve that adjustment.
I'll make a mo- motion to approve, um, today's agenda with those two adjustments.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, so we can start if Chris is ready to, because that's the order of the agenda. He's going to come up and tell us about the Active Transportation Plan and Focus Group Schedule that will be held tomorrow morning in this room.
Sorry, Nick. Were you able to get my presentation or?
Oh, I didn't see it. What time did you send it?
Uh, maybe around like one o'clock. It's okay, I can do it from, without it.
Are you sure? I'll email it to her really quick and we can just flip flop. Is that okay? Okay. And that way, that'll give her a chance to receive it, so we'll just, if that's okay with the council. Could I have a motion to do that while we get the, his presentation loaded?
I'll make a motion to flip flop. How's that? Flip flop.
Just need a second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, we're ready for you.
Mayor, I'll forward that.
Oh, you have it, okay, thank you.
So Scott, well Scott's handing out pens, um, I'll tell you what we are.
Aye.
Um, Reefs Across America is a program that's handled, um, and run by the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Thank you, Council.
We have a wonderful program every year in Cedar City. I know that there's one in Summit, there's one in Paragona, but there's not one in, and there's one in Enic, but there's not one in Parowan. And I've had multiple people come up to me who reside in Parowan, who would be very, um, glad to have a Reefs Across America program here in Parowan in December of every year, um, going forward. So, Scott will tell you a little bit more about it and then we can talk a little bit more.
Thank you Cathy. Thank you Mayor and Council for allowing me to be here tonight. This is something that has grown very near and dear to my heart. I remember about four and a half years ago, in a council meeting similar to this, we had two ladies come to us from the Daughters of the American Revolution and proposed that we should do this program. Uh, I had heard of it because I had gone the year earlier to Enic for their celebration and I was so touched and moved by that, I said, "Why aren't we doing this in Cedar City?" Well, they came to us and presented it and of course, they wanted Cedar City to do it. And like all of you sitting up there, I just said, "This is wonderful, but you know what? I just don't have the time to do it. I can't take it on." And that was pretty much the premise from the rest of the council members. And, uh, so as time went on, nothing happened and nothing happened and they came to us like in May of the year and finally about, uh, September, I said, "You know what? I've gotta do this, we gotta do this. This is the right thing to do for our veterans." And so, I agreed to take on the responsibility of chairing it, but I made very carefully clear that I was not doing this alone. I got a very group of wonderful volunteers to help me. I think there's a what, thirteen people on our committee? I now call them a board because it's so much more exciting to say, "Would you join my board instead of a committee?", you know? Um, and we meet, uh, from about August through September and on into December, we meet monthly and as we get to December, we meet twice a week, twice a month, uh, because it just gets more and more involved. This is a national program. Uh, you do not set the date when it takes place. It is done by the National Office. And this coming year is December 16th. It's a Saturday. It's always on a Saturday. Uh, last year was December 17th, it just sort of rolls with the calendar. And this is a day of celebration and remembrance. This is not to be confused, confused in Memorial Day. The premise behind this is that at this time when all of us are gathering in our homes and all the blessings that we have at that special time of year, we want to make sure the families and the veterans who made these celebrations possible are not forgotten. So it is not a grave decorating, it's a remembrance. And so, the National Office supplies live wreaths. They come from New Hampshire, Maine, and depending on the offices it comes out of. They are trucked here and then they are for you to lay out on the veterans' graves. It's not for the veteran spouses, it is not for the children, it is for the veterans who have served. Uh, and it's for all branches of military and all conflicts that we've had, uh, over the years. So you would have to go through your cemetery and determine, now maybe your section might know this information. The first year we did it, we took their information the best we could. It was eight hundred and fifty-three names. We ordered eight hundred and seventy-five wreaths. We were four hundred short. And it was a mess because we had families very mad and we said, "All we can do is take the information that is provided to us." So it is up to the mortuaries, it's up to the families to indicate to the, to the cemetery staff that my father was a veteran in World War I and then they have to show a very simple paper of discharge or something that verifies they were indeed a veteran. That's all you have to do. The wreaths are seventeen dollars each. Uh, you private fundraise or if the city has, you know, unlimited funds, I'm sure they could step forward, Mr. City Manager.
I'm sure we do.
But truly, we have never had an issue because people, uh, have been so respectful and so supportive of the veterans' movement, um, you're able to buy them. Now, I haven't heard the news yet this year, but I believe it will be the same. It's seventeen dollars a piece and then if you purchase, um, three, you get them for like fifteen dollars a piece or something like that. You're allowed to lay the wreaths if you wish to lay them and if not, you get volunteers to come and lay the wreaths. And you have a very simple program, it's entirely up to the sponsoring entity. You know, we usually have a flag raising, we sing the National Anthem, we have a short program. It's very inspiring, people are moved to tears and, and it's, it's tender, but it's also celebratory. And it's proven to be very, very successful. So, the second year, we went through and we went through every line of our cemetery. We went down every single headstone. I know it because I did it and, uh, along with a couple of other people and we looked for every single headstone to see what we'd missed. Second year, we had forty that we missed. Last year, we had one. So we're making progress. Uh, it's a wonderful program. The city does not have to have a financial commitment. The commitment will come in your cemetery staff being able to assist with it. And I mean, they have to be able to work with the volunteer group. I have meetings with the cemetery staff there and say, "Give me a map because we have to have a plat map of where they're located and then you have to place an American flag on each one of the veterans' graves and you are asked at the time of the wreath laying to put the wreath over the American flag and then thank that veteran for their service to the country." It's that simple, really. Uh, and it's, it's worth it. I don't know if you'll have four hundred, three hundred, I don't know how many you'll have, but, um, it's worth doing.
Seeing those wreaths on all the graves in December is wonderful. I don't know if you've driven by our cemetery, you know, mid, after mid-December, it's beautiful with all the wreaths and as you're driving past Parowan Cemetery to go to Brianhead, it would be an exceptional, um, look, um, for people to see all of those wreaths for the veterans.
I would just say in closing that I'd be happy to work with anybody that, if there was such a volunteer that wanted to head this up or something, I'd be happy to take them through my paperwork, my books, all that. I mean, I learn by doing it. I would say there is a national, uh, veteran, I mean, Reefs Across America website. Go to it, you can learn all kinds of information, but don't do your fundraising through them because they keep the money on the national level. You want to raise the money locally. They will send the wreaths to you. And they also send all of the, uh, flags for each of the, our arms of the service and then you place those in the ceremonial wreath that you have your veterans lay out or Boy Scouts or whoever it might happen to be.
Okay.
Are there questions that you have?
Why haven't we done this sooner?
How long do these wreaths lay?
That is really kind of up to you. We usually keep them out about thirty days. You know, we just, it's cold, it's, they're frozen and it's, in fact, we didn't get the flags out, as you know, the winter we had, we didn't get the flags out till about a month ago. We just, every time we went to do it with the volunteer group, we couldn't get them out of the ground. So, um, yeah, that's, that's really up to you and the cemetery however it works. And I thought, silly me, I thought, "Oh gee, will this recycle these? Those would be great because it's all alive." But they're all wired in and they're wire wreaths and, you know, that doesn't work too well in the recycling bin. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Council and Sheriff, you have a count, don't you? We've got a name and it's all because of Kristin Robson. We've got a name and a location for every veteran in Parowan Cemetery. And if you drive by on Memorial Day, you'll see a flag and a cross.
There you go. So you're set up.
The reason that we didn't do the wreaths across America was that we could not come up with the money necessary for one wreath for every person. But what we did do is we bought fifteen wreaths and created, uh, uh, a setup up there at the cemetery. And in talking to Kristin, we were thinking when we heard about the wreaths of America again, we've talked and we've thought, "What we'll do is, is buy as many as we can and have our wreaths up there at the veterans' monument and, and do there as opposed to going up through the cemetery." But there, there's other ways.
Oh, many other ways, yeah.
Many ways, in fact, when we talked with them before, that was one of the things that we came up with was having, uh, the, the wreaths across America right there at the, uh, the flagpole. So we have done it. Uh, we don't do it as extensive as some of these other places, but then again, our cemetery looks ten times better than any other memorial.
It is a pretty amazing cemetery.
It really is.
I go out there quite frequently, so yeah, I'm aware of that.
Do you know how many veterans we have?
What do we got? Four hundred? Four hundred and seventy-three. And if you want the names, she can recite them all.
I'm sure she could. I would believe it.
Well, I would tell you, I'm gonna put myself out there, Mayor, and you tell me who to make the check to, I'll give you a hundred dollars towards this project, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we could just recognize Kristin for her work that way. I don't think she ever even, most people ever know and how much that has been over many years, so.
Family members of veterans are very generous and they, they all appreciate this, that they haven't been forgotten and that they are more than willing, you know, we get five dollar checks. We get ten dollar checks from, from widows who, you know, you can tell by the way they write the check, but it means something to them, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, didn't you say that there was an individual that you may recommend that could help with this project that lives here in Parowan or?
Oh, I could recommend about twenty people though.
Oh, I thought you had some.
I'm not going to put anybody on the spot, but yeah, there are, there are people that live here in Parowan that would be phenomenal at organizing this event.
Okay. Kristin, do you want to do it again?
(laughing).
You wouldn't have to provide the money, it should be fundraised.
Right, but it's still.
You can come up.
I think this should happen. I don't know Cheryl Mount. She's just a quiet, incredible woman, but I remember this year, her talking about it because we all love Cooper and Cooper's up there and he died very young, but I remember her talking about it and being sad that Cooper didn't have a wreath on his grave. And so, I think, and I would love to help with it, I am so busy, but this is something I would love to put forth time to help with because I would do it for Cheryl because Cheryl will do anything for anybody. And I know it wasn't, I, I know she, and she doesn't really share her feelings to everybody, I remember talking to her in depth about it one day and she was sad that Cooper did not have a wreath on his grave and she asked me how that happened and I didn't know much, hardly anything about it. I think I found out a little bit, so that's super cool you guys take. And I would love to help with that and I just know as my good friend Cheryl, she would really love a wreath on her, that's her grave, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. It was actually Cheryl that talked to me at our, um, Cedar City Reefs Across America now, if we could come and do this, so yeah.
And I want you to know, I don't work for Reefs Across America, well, I do because I work so, but we're not advocating this, we're just saying, if you want to do it, these are what you should look into.
Okay, thank you. You can.
I think it's something we should consider. I really do. Christmas is a special time. It's hard for those that have lost people at Christmas. It's a tender time and I'm not trying to distract from Memorial Day, but I think Christmas really is a time when some people need a little extra support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And if you'd like to help with that, you can contact any of us on the council, we can put together a list and, and people that would like to be involved. Okay, thank you. Alright, we're ready for you. Moving on to the Active Transportation Plan with Chris Wiltse.
Great. Yeah, my name's Chris Wiltse. Um, for the sake of gaining credibility, I don't actually live in Salt Lake City, from Provo. Um, so I run a program called the Thousand Miles Program. Okay, cool. Yeah, so I run the Thousand Miles Program, so the idea was about, um, maybe around 2017, Governor Herbert, um, set a goal of adding a thousand miles of what he termed as family-friendly bicycle infrastructure or trails, pathways, things like that. And since, um, since then, Governor Cox has kind of taken up that goal. And so Bike Utah was contracted with to fulfill that goal. Um, and what we mean when we say family-friendly bicycle infrastructure, I'll kind of give it you and, give it to you in a nutshell, but the idea is as speeds increase and the number of vehicles increase, so should the intensity of protective infrastructure. And we're actually doing what's called a needs assessment right now across the state and we're, we're talking with a lot of different people and what we're finding pretty consistently is this is the type of, um, bicycle infrastructure facilities that people want, um, as opposed to just painted bike lanes. Um, these are the kinds of things that people will take their children on or their families. Um, so some examples of what I am talking about would be like in a neighborhood, it's more about reinforcing that speed limit. Um, and there's different strategies and then as we, we look at busier roads, wider roads, faster roads, um, we're talking about more like a multi-use path. So, kind of that idea of the intensity increasing. Um, so as far as how the overall, um, Active Transportation Planning process will go, um, initially, we went through a partner engagement, um, effort. So, we, we met with different stakeholders, we had a meeting in here, um, I met with you all virtually. And, um, we've been talking with folks at UDOT and other organizations, um, to kind of gain their buy-in for what we're doing and people within your community. And now, we're at that public engagement phase. So, uh, tomorrow, we'll have two meetings. Um, one will be kind of a policy meeting where we'll have like government staff and, um, elected officials in the morning, so that'll be at nine o'clock. That's gonna be here, correct? And, um, then at eleven o'clock, we'll have, um, an open house with two sessions. So the first session will be at eleven o'clock and I'll give a presentation and we'll talk through it like with everybody within the community and you can give your input and we'll really have a conversation about like, what are your values and what do, what would you like to see, um, in your transportation system? So, um, I wouldn't say that I have any sort of agenda. Think of me more as like a mirror trying to reflect, um, your values as a community and what you'd like to see. Um, and then after that, twelve o'clock, we'll have a second session, so we'll kind of, um, have those two sessions, so, um, there's more chances or opportunities for people to, um, engage. And then after we get all that input from the community, um, we'll then set that vision as a, sort of a synthesis of everything everybody's talked about and we'll talk through goals and objectives and then we'll run all those, after we've come up with all those from what everybody's been saying, we'll bring that all back to you and, um, get your input and sort of get a feel for, does this actually look like what you heard in those meetings and what you, um, submitted as your goals and visions and objectives? Um, and then after that, we'll, we'll do an analysis of your community to kind of understand what's going on, where maybe some problem areas, where accidents happening, um, where are your strengths, maybe what are some of the obstacles that exist? And then we'll come up with some recommendations based off of those values of your community, your goals, and also that analysis that we, um, went through. And then we'll, we'll come up with an implementation strategy, so what are grants that you could apply for? How can we support you into the future to actually achieve the goals of your community that have, that we've, um, sort of translated into this plan? And we'll create some performance measures so you can make sure that you're actually meeting those goals that we've sort of collectively, um, created. And as far as project timeline, um, we are in the March, April, May kind of period where we're doing the partner in public engagement at this point and then we'll start doing the document creation throughout the summer and hopefully by, um, the fall, we'll have something for you all to review and, um, and we'll submit to you for your final vote, um, at early fall. So, any questions?
You did wonderful.
Yeah.
I guess you'll answer them tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. And I'd just like to invite everybody in here to come in and, um, have that conversation with us and give your, your feedback and.
Eleven and twelve.
Yeah, eleven and twelve, yeah.
And there is a flyer out, um, on the pulpit out there that I, if someone wanted to pick it up and read about it.
Yeah, if you want to come at the beginning of each of those times, so either at eleven or twelve, we'll, I'll be giving a presentation and we'll talk through like values and goals and things like that, so either eleven or twelve. And then we'll, we'll actually get down on the map and start drawing lines, so if you have like a project that you'd really love to be having, this is the time to do it. Or, um, you can talk to the mayor, she can get your, my, get you my email address and you can send any of your thoughts directly to me. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I said your name wrong. Alright, moving now to, um, I guess that puts us at public comment. So I wanted to just kind of read something that I prepared, um, don't worry, it's not very long. It says, um, this is kind of just the rules of engagement of public comment. Um, first of all, we really appreciate you being here. It might seem like a really strange thing to say, but this is like a dream come true for me because, we ask for your, we ask for you to participate all the time, we want to hear from you and things like that and I get very few emails. I really do. I don't get very many emails. And really, emails are great, you can email myself or the council at any time, but we're all busy and that doesn't happen as often. Sometimes we're in discussions and we talk through things and there's nobody here and then everybody says, "I didn't know about it" and it's frustrating. So the nice thing is that you're here and, um, as far as the, the presentation of the agenda, moving you to this position is I don't want you to feel rushed if you have something to say, I want you to take the time to say it, but also be aware that, um, if it's been said, it doesn't need to be said over and over and over again. Um, if it's been said, if you have something new to say, that would be great. We're all gonna be listening, we're all gonna take notes. If there's something that we are, you know, would be able to answer, we will do that during an appropriate discussion later in the agenda or at another meeting if you bring that to us to put on a, on an agenda. Um, so for a long time, we didn't have public comment that we would have the agenda items that we could talk about, but I kept trying to figure out how to make you aware of what was coming and a lot of the time, we just don't know. And so, I wanted you to be able to public comment, so please, some cities do it, some cities don't. It really just depends on how the meeting goes, so if the meeting goes well, then we can continue to do this because it works well for us. Um, so that being said, I have two things. One of them is just the definition of public discourse, I'm sorry, civil discourse. It's a conversation in which there is a mutual airing of views. It is not a contest, rather, it is intended to promote mutual understanding. Civil discourse follows general rules of polite behavior. And then I have to quote it, I don't think it came from Troy, Troy, Houston, but, and I haven't been able to find where it did come from, but, "Say what you mean, mean what you say, but don't be mean when you say it." Okay? And now, I would like to open this time up for public comment. You do have a two-minute limit and Rochelle, I'm sorry, Councilmember Topham is gonna be a timekeeper, so if you're okay, you're okay, so maybe this, but if you're not, you need to wind it down real quick, okay? So maybe she'll hold up the "you're okay" for the last fifteen seconds and then you need to wrap it up.
I can do that.
Oh, state your name. State your name, come to the microphone. The other thing about public comment is don't talk from the audience. Don't over-talk each other, don't shout things out. If you have something to say, wait for the next turn and come up to the microphone. And this will go really well. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Hyada Mortensen, and I have a very brief comment to make, uh, in the form of a letter that I've addressed to the mayor and the city council and anyone who may be concerned with this issue. To whom it may concern, I am a direct member of the Bart and Vera Mortensen family, having a home here in Perwin, Utah, and wish to clarify with certainty the agreement Bart and Vera made with this city when they donated their property for the building, building of a community swimming pool. Their expressed agreement was that the property be used for the planned swimming pool and then a green space be maintained by Perwin City. This contract was sealed by a handshake and thought by those entering the agreement to be binding on the city. By oversight, the agreement was not put into writing and has been challenged on several occasions. It is therefore the wish of the remaining Bart and Vera Mortensen family members that the Perwin City deed be made to reflect the original intent for this property, which was, as I have said, for the building of a community swimming pool and green space for the enjoyment of all in Perwin City and surrounding areas. Please honor the integrity of prior Perwin City officials and show your own by complying with this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Catherine Allen, and first of all, I'd like to thank whoever got this grant for Perwin City. Like that. Thank you for getting this grant. I think any recreational facility for Perwin is a win-win situation. And, uh, I've, I've looked at the pickleball courts in other places, and most of them are not in with park and pools or in a sports complex. I've been reading how the baseball fields have gone downhill, so I rode out there today, and it's a beautiful sports complex. The soccer fields, I can't see that the ball fields are that bad that they say Cedar won't come play on them, but I would like to see us build on that sports complex. And, uh, there's talk of a big new pool for competition, pickleball courts for tournaments. Uh, we don't need a great big pool. The kids are busy with school in the winter, and, uh, I don't think we need all this money coming in. We need to think of the citizens and a splash pad maybe or something, but I'd like to see the pickleball courts go in the sports complex. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to just, what is gonna happen with the pool? Is the pool gonna get fixed? The pool's not gonna get fixed? What is the situation with the pool?
I'm sorry, could you state your name, please?
Kenneth Combs.
Thank you.
I live here in Perwin. This'll be my second year. I grew up pretty much here, but when I retired, I moved here, so. But, that's my thing. I, I would hate to see the pool go away if they have to charge more money to use the pool. I know my nephews and nieces love that pool, and they missed it last year big time. So, I would just like to know what is the plan for saving the pool?
And I think we're, are we talking about that on number, item number fifteen? We are, and I actually remembered, we were gonna do kind of an introduction to public comment that our city manager had prepared. I don't know if, Dan, you wanna keep going on the course we are, or do you wanna step in at this point with your introduction? I should've put that in my notes.
Well, what I would suggest is (cough) maybe we have a public comment period. I mean, open it up to public comment when we, when we get to fifteen and we're talking about that. Um, I, I, I know that Councilman Burton, who's over parks and stuff, had stuff he wanted to share. Um, I wanted, I love the fact that we have a full room. We've been talking about a lot of these things for a while, um, and there's some update that I think that would be beneficial for everybody. Um, certainly, what we don't wanna engage in is a question and answer about something that's later on gonna be discussed.
I saw that's gonna be discussed later on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you, do you wanna do a separate?
Well, I mean, I'm looking at the agenda, and I'm, I'm hoping everybody can hang in there with us, but I wanted your comments to be heard, so you didn't feel like they were heard as an afterthought, but I wanted them to be heard, you know, when we were ahead of the item on the agenda. So, you would recognize we were incorporating that, your concerns and, and comments in our discussion.
As a general rule, public comment is just that. It's not where the council responds back. It's that they, people, public has a right to come forward, express their opinions. There's two months, we don't respond, we listen, and then when it's done, the council can respond to something if they choose to do so.
I guess more of a, sometimes you'll open up to a spontaneous, you know, the mayor will allow questions or something on an agenda.
It can be done, but as a general rule, that's not, that's done.
And not a designated public comment period is what I meant, but...
Okay.
Can I just add something? Would, if we do that, can I, can you wait till after I'm through?
Well, I think we're, okay. We'll continue on. Yes.
Hi, I'm Jessica Smith. I'm a resident here, uh, in Perwin and also the Perwin PTO president. Um, I just wanna say tonight, um, for those of you who may be looking around and thinking that there's not a lot of people here in support of the pool and for these pickleball courts and the younger thing, it's because there is a dance concert tonight, and so a lot of the parents are there. But I know that there are a lot of parents that would also like to be here to give their comments. So, I'm not saying I'm speaking on behalf of those parents for younger kids, but I will say, um, to that comment before, yes, our kids are busy with school in winter, but it's also a time where there's not a lot of stuff for our kids to do. Um, and so, having an indoor pool would be a wonderful thing for, I feel like, my children, um, to be able to be used as another option for something to do in the winter. Um, I also, uh, am not opposed to having the pickleball courts as an option down at that park. Since I have moved here, I have yet to see that park be used by a lot of people. Um, unfortunately, I have seen that it's mainly just vacant and filled up with candy lions and things like that.
Excuse me, could you just clarify which park?
Uh, the, one of the mountains.
The Lions Park?
The Lions Park, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and so, I think it could be, um, and again, I don't know the agreement that was there, but I think it would be really wonderful to start seeing that part be used more, um, as it was probably intended in green space. And I know that with the water issues that we've had in the past with drought and stuff like that, that's, that's something that I would also like to take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Bill Stewart. Is it okay if we talk about something other than the, the park now?
Of course.
The park now?
Yes, absolutely. Whatever you want.
Thank you. I live, uh, in Perwin, right next to the Heritage Park, and I would like to talk about the BMX motorcycle track that's been built next to Perwin, next to Heritage Park. Uh, my wife and I love watching everybody in the park. The park is, the Heritage Park is just an amazing place. It's so much fun to see everybody come in there and enjoy it, and calm and peace, and they sit on the grass or they take their dogs for a run. And this last Sunday morning, we woke up and there was, we were woken up by backup alarms, and they were building, using a caterpillar and a loader and a little bobcat, and building a BMX motorcycle track there. So, on Monday, I came down and I talked to the, or tried to talk with Dan. Dan was at a, a meeting in, out of town, and he, I was told he wouldn't be back until the end of the week. The next morning, Dan was on his way home, and he called me from his phone, "Oh, thank you, Dan." But, we were, we were very concerned about it because the park is such a wonderful place, and a BMX track just does not belong next to Heritage Park. Those two types of operations just don't go well together. We were told, and I'm sure Dan was told the same thing, that it's for e-bikes only, but e-bikes and pit tra, pit bikes are what will be used there. I talked to the people building the park, not the actual owner, but to the people that built the park, and they said it would be for pit bikes and e-bikes. Uh, and there's no facilities there for parking, there's no facilities for restrooms, so all of that overflow, and well, things will be going back onto the park, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Combs, again, Perwin, Utah. A good friend of mine built that track, Brock Crambyel. He bought the property, he built the track. We have three tracks in Vegas that all the kids ride. The only thing allowed on those tracks are Serons, electric motorcycles that the tires only this wide. They don't make dust, they don't make noise. It's gonna be a private riding facility only. If you don't know about it, you're not gonna be out there riding it. And it's pretty much gonna be Brock's friends, my friends, Daryl's friends, but it's gonna be a personal riding space, and there is water available out there. Brock will make sure it's watered, and the dust will be to a very minimum because electric bikes don't make that much dust anyways because the tire's only two inches wide. There will be no motorized bikes on that track. So, I just wanted to say that much. And if anybody has any questions about that, feel free to speak to me after the meeting, and we'll just make sure everybody's concerns get met. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Combs, did you just answer a question? Somebody referred to a pit bike. What's a pit bike?
Those little fifties the kids run around on, the little mini bikes. They have fifty cc motors.
So, they are motorized?
Yeah, they are, they are gasoline engine bikes. The only bikes that will be on that track were the electric Seron bikes.
So, the pit bikes will not?
No, no pit bikes at all.
Thank you for that clarification.
Because if it was up to me, I'd be riding my dirt bike on it, but Brock says I can't do that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cindy Paris, and I also live on ninety-one, and all of the neighbors are concerned because we didn't know what was going in, what was going to happen, what the noise level would be, what the dust level would be, and how it's going to interact with the park. There are people sometimes there for family reunions. It would be a beautiful park to have a wedding. Do you really want dust flying around and all the noise? Now, if it's a quiet thing and they can assure us there's not going to be a lot of dust, I have no qualms about that. I used to ride dirt bikes, and if I weren't an old lady, I probably still would be. So, I just want you to know that it's not just a few of us that are concerned, there's many of us that are concerned. And so far from what I've heard, um, this person is not an easy person to deal with. I don't know that firsthand. I wouldn't know him if I saw him. But I do know that I walked my dogs that way, and after this was being done, the amount of trash that was left was appalling. Now, some of it was there for ages. I walk every morning, and I have started taking a garbage bag with me because I'm sick and tired of seeing beer cans, soda pop cans, um, cigarette wrappers, cigarette butts. I just want our community to stay the beautiful community that it is. Just please know that it's not just one or two of us that are concerned about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know this is public comment time, but I just wanna say thank you for picking up trash. That's awesome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Jen Sullivan, and I live here in Perwin, and we have a lot of divisive topics tonight. Um, but I would like to just say, I thank you all for putting up with so much. Um, you've applied for a lot of grants this year, and it's so exciting to see this because we've only lived here for a few years, not from California. Um, (laugh) but we came here for community, and we came here for our kids to give them a better life. And I volunteer in a million different things to help our kids, and I love that you have, um, really worked to be transparent and to give us information. So, I just wanna say thank you for that. Um, I'm currently right across the street from the park in Question, which is Lions. And, um, I, we've actually, we put the volleyball court, um, up the net, so please don't take it down. Um, but we chose to do that because we do use that park a lot. My husband goes over there and pooper scoops. We don't have any animals, but it needs it. And so, we're utilizing that park a lot right now, and we appreciate it. And I know that the city has lots of properties that we could utilize for the pickleball courts. My concern is there might not be enough parking if we have eight courts, and maybe we could look at sports complex as well, um, because we do have some properties that are right there that might also work for that. I love the idea of having all of the pickleball courts right where we have our concession stand, and maybe we can make some extra money and get those softball or baseball fields a little bit flattened out so that we're not the bane of some people's existence. So, just my two cents, but I really appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for not making us say "need help."
(laughing)
I couldn't thank the prior one for cleaning up trash without thanking Jen for cleaning up the poop in the park. That's awesome.
(laughing)
I walked that park the other day, and I was like, "It's been so cold, that's gotta be the reason there's not poop everywhere." And now I know there's not poop everywhere because your husband's been over there.
And we also...
And he's one of our crosswalk guards as well. He's awesome, so thank you.
We also know how the volleyball net got there now.
(laughing)
Thank you.
That's the culprit. And there's a ball and everything. I drove by today, and I'm like, "Someone could just get out and start playing."
Hey, and if you need a desk, don't have to, because we go over there too. So, there's sometimes a desk, and you can play with this as well.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Daryl Owen. I'm actually not a resident of Perwin, but I have, uh, some property across the valley. And so, I come through Perwin all, all the time. I have a lot of friends here, and I live in Cedar City. The thing I'm concerned about is how we kinda isolate our kids. They wanna do these activities like ride motorcycles, play pickleball, swim, yet there's always this constant battle with the community or, um, challenges with the community to have these types of activities. Brock bought a piece of property. His intention was to let the kids in the community of, of Perwin, uh, ride their electric motorcycles, not gas-powered, at this, this, this location, and give the kids something to do. The problem is, is there's a few that don't wanna, uh, respect or give the, the kids an opportunity to be kids. And I've also experienced this on my property. I have a conditional use permit that's actually been approved by the Iron County Council for exactly this type of activity. It's in the middle of nowhere. It's up Kane Springs Road, up the valley, uh, and that's exactly what it was intended for. This is what's gonna happen if you don't start letting these kids have a place to, to enjoy themselves. And by the way, it, it's good for the families. What I can tell you is growing up in this industry, um, families that ride together stay together. They play hard together, and they, they work hard together. So, I'm asking you to give them a chance, whether it's here, my track, Brock's track, wherever, give them a chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vicki Hicks. And thank you ever got by, everybody. I've sat in those seats, and I know how difficult this is. I just wanted to share with you that I'm part of the pickleball family, okay? I'm part of the group in town, and it's much larger than what has been presented in social media and stuff that goes on. There's a lot of us. But I also wanted to remind you that pickleball's now at the high school. They're playing pickleball there. I mean, the pickleball is at both of the churches. I mean, pickleball is, is available through the town, but, uh, limited. I mean, the pickleball is at both of the churches. I mean, pickleball is available through the town, but limited. Of course, we don't, you know, the general population on Saturdays and Sundays can't go to the high school and play pickleball. You know, can't go to the church and play pickleball. And so, we're not looking, I don't know that everybody understands that two-hundred thousand dollar grant isn't gonna build eight pickleball courts. It's gonna build, if we're lucky, four. If we're lucky, maybe three. But, you know, and then an opportunity, then if it's really utilized, then the city would look at maybe expanding it at a later date and building on more courts if the need be. But to start out, it's not this big eight, uh, what do you call it? Anyway, court, it's not eight courts to start with. It's only three or four. So I think that, you know, unfortunately, our rumor mill that gets going in our town, everybody means well. And you know, as I shared with the mayor earlier, had the pool issue been taken care of before the grant came through, we wouldn't even be discussing this. We're discussing this now because the pool has not been taken care of. The pool's not there, and so there's some other decisions that have to be made. But please, please don't think that it's just two or three or ten old people down there playing pickleball. It's not. On some days, there's twenty-five to thirty people down there playing pickleball for three to four hours at a time. I got it.
Sorry, I'm not a very good timer. I don't like to cut people off.
No, I'm sorry. I just wanted to share all of the information and get all of the information out there.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, all.
I'm Becky Helquist. I am three doors down from the Heritage Park. And, um, I'm actually appalled that it was allowed in such a reverent place. The park, my goodness, that was one of the earliest things that, I mean, our ancestors came down a park there. Native Americans lived there. And now we have, uh, I just feel like, uh, it's been blasphemy as far as I'm concerned, that park. And I'm sorry, I don't agree with you, but I, we are unappreciative of your efforts, and that we don't want the kids to have any fun. That's wrong. We have children in this community. I just don't want, uh-
You need to address the council.
I don't want the dirt. I'm a thousand feet from that park. Uh, I, I just feel like it's ill-placed. And, uh, well, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brandy Jantsch. I live here in Parowan, and my son rides motocross bikes. And we have had the cops called so many times from him riding on our own property. So I guarantee you, there are people out here that want to shut things down no matter what, whether they're doing right or wrong. I know he's tried to ride out at Bryce's and Em's Track and had issues there, and there's nowhere for these kids to ride. They get in trouble if they ride on the streets, so they're trying to go to a track, they're getting in trouble there. They're making a turn track out in the middle of nowhere, and it's getting closed off, and there's nowhere for these kids to ride. So I'm in support of the tracks and them being opened and pickleball. I grew up in Canash, three hundred and fifty people, and they have pickleball courts there in their park, and they are utilized constantly. And I know there are a lot of people that wishes they could be here tonight, but they're with their kids, but in support of the pickleball courts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Smead, Seventy West Center. In listening to the comments regarding Heritage Park, I think it's important now, knowing what can happen with a parcel of land that goes for sale. It sounds like this is something that was important to the community, that they would have liked Heritage Park to be extended, to be able to maintain control over what happened there. It sounds like it went to an individual who is now exercising their personal property rights. I think it's important to understand that protecting personal property rights is critical. We can't say, you know, I don't like what my neighbor's doing, they need to stop, it's on their property. If they're following the code and ordinances, then they're allowed to do that. So I think it's, as Parowan grows, it's really critical to identify key pieces of land that the community values and would like the city to incorporate into their park system, into their trail system, what that looks like. I mean, that's what you all can do. You can have an overview of what's needed. It's unfortunate, I think this parcel was for sale maybe eighteen months ago, that there wasn't an action at that time if this Heritage Park is as important to your community and to our community as it's expressing. So I would just maybe be more forward-thinking. And as far as pickleball and any activities for youth, I think it's critical, critical, critical that anything is done and supported and moved forward, even if it's one court at a time, to give kids more things to do and connect with each other. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, city manager Chuck Bentley, one fifty-six East Center Street. Pickleball is a big deal, and we all know that. I've got a son-in-law that just got drafted as a professional pickleball player. I mean, it's, it's on the rise, generates lots of interest, lots of traffic. Should be a real benefit to Parowan. But I'm thinking the sports complex is by far the best location. Because of the traffic, the interest, it doesn't need to be introduced on the residents that are across the street from the pool on the Lyons Park. The Lyons Park has kind of gained, it's kinda got momentum. It's used a lot more than it used to be. And a lot of that use is people that are either just walking to the park or they have a family picnic under the pavilion, whatever, and hoping that the pool gets done pretty quick. That's already quite a bit of traffic. And in respect to the Mortenson's, there maybe isn't a document that states that, but the fact is, there is a document that he donated the land to the city, and it was donated in good faith in the sixties. A handshake was good enough. So I'd like to see the pickleball parks, but I'd like to see them out by the ballparks. And I haven't heard anything, maintenance is a big deal. I guess that's all been addressed, but... So let's do pickleball, pickleball courts out of the sports complex. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daryl.
Okay, I don't see anybody wiggly, so we can wrap up public comment. All right, thank you. Thank you for all of you that came up and spoke, and the manner in which you, which you addressed the council. It was beneficial to us to have you here tonight, and would continue to invite you out to our council meetings to share your concerns and interest in our community. Um, we, I feel like our agenda's a little awkward, but we're going to now move into the consent meeting. This is the approval of city council minutes for April thirteenth, twenty-
What about the public hearing?
Oh, okay, the public hearing, oh, there it is, I see it. Public hearing to receive comments regarding the proposed Bauer Road annexation.
Don't we have to move out of-
Yeah.
I, I move that we move out of city council meeting into public hearing to receive comments regarding the proposed Bauer Road annexation.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. So moving into item number six.
Mary, Mayor, Dallas is here from Go Civil. You may want to give him just a second before the public just... I don't know if everybody here even knows what we're doing. We've talked about it in previous council meetings. This is just another step in the process, but maybe we could just have a quick update before the public has a chance to speak.
Sure, yeah. Dallas Buckner, Go Civil Engineering. We've been working with staff to bring this annexation through. We've brought this to council previously. There's a number of these meetings and steps and notices that we go through to, um, to follow the state's regulations on annexation. But this is an annexation over at the old True Values Store. And just to recap on it, the city came through and had done a, an annexation and zoning with a buffer along Two Hundred South. And when they did that buffering, there was some offset distance that they didn't necessarily pay attention to parcel lines. And so for the True Values Store, although under one property deed, I was bisected with that annexation. And so, the annexation request is just to bring the portion that wasn't brought in into the city. I think the annexation area was an acre, one point one-six acre, something like that, so.
It literally cuts a building in half. Half of a building is in the county and half is in the city. It wasn't very clean.
Yeah, they must have just had a two-hundred foot, three-hundred foot that they just offset from the road and did it that way. So we're trying to bring the rest of that parcel into the city, so.
Do we want to bring that up, the image, or do we have it accessible?
I don't have, I don't have it, we don't have it accessible. We could plug in my laptop and I could. Yeah, the actual annexation document, but, I mean, we brought it up in the last meeting, but...
So if everyone's okay, we don't need to. I just noticed people kinda looking, so I wondered if they were looking.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a statement as to, maybe a historical statement, how this happened. There was just so many feet set back on that, which was Two Hundred South, is the Old Holly Oak Lane we used to refer it to because the Holly Oak family lived down at the end, and the city just arbitrarily just carved out a few hundred feet each side so that they could give them city services in the form of water and so forth. And this was years and years ago, so they didn't pay attention to ownership or anything. They just did an arbitrary, you know, line down on each side.
So it's-
If the public would like to see it, we could, we could get that and put it up on the screen.
Is there anyone that would like to comment during public hearing? Okay, so we can move on and move out of the public hearing.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I just have to say that I have a conflict of interest. I forgot about that. I represent the owner who owns Bauer Road LLC and also represent Dallas, so just for the record. I don't see a problem with it, but I have a conflict of interest, so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Put it on the record.
Okay, so I need a motion to move out of public hearing into consent meeting.
I'll make a motion to move out of the public hearing and back to the consent meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving now into that consent meeting. These items are things we generally approve with one motion and one vote. The approval of the city council meeting minutes on April thirteenth, the work meeting and the regular meeting, and then the approval of the warrant register for April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
Mayor, I have a, well, a comment to make on the minutes. Um, there was some reference to the Meeks Pond, but I'd like to clarify that in my presentation. Can I wait until then? But just have it noted that there'll be a correction to the minutes that time.
How would that work, quarter?
Do I need to state it now? Try to.
Well, you need to state it now.
Yeah, because they can't approve it with-
Okay, it's regarding the planting of the fish. It alluded, the way it was worded, it was like the city planted the fish. The city did not plant the fish. The DWR did, and they're responsible. And the individual, Richard Hepworth, was out of town and unaware of the fish being planted at that time. It was another colleague with the DWR. So the city did not plant the fish, and the representative of the DWR that's in charge of that pond was unaware of it. So I just want that clarified, because the way it was worded is like the city planted the fish.
Who planted the fish?
The DWR did.
So if there are any other corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve the two items on the consent meeting with that correction from Councilman Burton.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent meeting of items number nine and ten with the changes with Councilman Burton.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and now moving from consent to action. These are items that do require council vote. We'll start with item number eleven, which is the update and implementation of PCA by Jeremy Franklin.
Okay, the PCA has been discussed a few times at council and a couple times at power board. So on the updates, we, uh-
And adopted.
Yes, and adopted by city council last meeting.
And PCA stands for?
Power Cost Adjustment. Sorry, thanks.
Okay.
Um, and last week, we took it to power board to decide what, where we wanted to start with the adoption of the PCA, like what, what cost.
You want that up?
Yeah, if you could pull it up, that'd be great. The recommendation of the power board was to just start the power cost adjustment as the model, which is provided by UFS, Utility Financial Solutions. Just start with what the model shows and don't worry about under collection at this time. When we discussed that at power board, we didn't have the March numbers into the model because we are a month behind with our UAMs bill. So when Judy and I put the numbers in on Monday or Tuesday for the March, it came to, the PCA charge came to five point five-nine-two-five cents. Would be the charge per kilowatt hour. So we kinda discussed that internally and with members of the power board and the two councils that are on the power board. I think there was a little bit of apprehension with that, with that amount to start with. I do think that our UAMs bills are gonna improve. The market, the power market is softening quite a bit. Through the summer months, we will have our coal plant back up and running. I think that we are gonna see better, better numbers, but if we looked at the very... Kelly, can you scroll that down and clear to the right? With the March numbers, we're at eight hundred, over eight hundred thousand dollars of under collection over the last two years. Go down now. Oh, not that far, just to the bottom of the numbers. So we do-
Holy moly, fantastic.
So we need to do something, for sure.
It's a power guy. It's his energetic personality.
Yeah, so you can see that bottom right number right there, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That's our under collection. So I did just a quick research this afternoon on some other cities.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so this is other UAM cities that have implemented PCA. Some of them have had them implemented for a long time. If you look at the top two, Washington City and Brigham City, they're both at point oh-five-two-three, so not far off where our PCA number shows. The Logan City on there has had theirs in for like ten years. In March, they were four point eight cents, and in April, they were like two point eight. Mount Pleasant City, they didn't have it on their website. I just called them, so I know that they're using the same company as us, and they were four cents on theirs. And then I pulled up Lehigh's, which I think that they just adjust theirs annually. They don't do like a six-month look- They don't do like a six month look back like we are and adjust it monthly, so theirs was only one point seven cents. Um, obviously every city's different, resources are different, um, you know, demographics are different. So, uh, I just wanted that to show that, you know, we're not way out of the, the wheelhouse according to, you know, with everybody else. Um, but we, I mean, we have, with the model, we can manually input the PCA. Um, we can, you know, ease into it. Um, we are doing a rate study coming probably, uh, the July bill or June billing period. So, that will, if we choose to adjust rates there, that could bring this PCA down. So that, I mean, there's options moving forward, but, um, I just wanted to get the feel of the council, um, what, what's everybody feel? I mean, if we just go with the PCA, if you scroll up just a little bit, Cali, I think it's, actually it should.
Can I just point something out? Um, so, I mean, we had adopted the PCA and decided to have the power board, um, steer this, um, have close eyes on it every Monday, I mean, every month that they look at it. And the reason why this is coming back to the city council was when, when they met and, and, and I don't want to put words into two of the power board's members which are here, but, um, we didn't know yet what the, what the, the March bill was gonna be, what the impact was gonna be, nor had we, um, actually, we didn't have Polaris as our billing software. That was not yet plugged in, so we couldn't plug in the numbers and actually see the impact of the bill. Um, that happened after power board made that recommendation and staff was just a little bit nervous that, are we sure the very first month, we want to just completely let this float and thought it would be appropriate to bring it back to council? Not that we want to bring it back to council every time or anything like that, but, um, and, and, and really take a second look at this as we implement it. And just to point out, when, when Jeremy says under collection of eight hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, you can round that however you want to round it. That's in the red. Gro- gross margin. Gross margin. That's before overhead. We've been like, that continues and our power company is, is bankrupt. So, that's why this is, has come up. That's why we had to do something before the rate study was considered. Um, we've, we, we hope we've seen the worst of those things and this PCA will also then adjust back down. But that's what we're talking about. And so, I talked to Matt and I talked to Sharon and I said, you guys feel comfortable bringing it back to the council even though the power board had made that decision? And they, they talked to another member of the power board and felt like it'd be okay. So, I just wanted to give that caveat.
And this is an average of six months, what it goes back to?
Yes.
It's not just.
A rolling average of six months.
And the reason why the six months have been all high. It's, it's just that it didn't happen all at once. I mean, it has happened always, but it hasn't, you know, we haven't lost money over years. It's just, everybody's been experiencing.
Yeah, the, five of the last six months have been the highest power bills for us as a city that we've ever had. October was low. Uh, we haven't had the coal plant running, but, um, yeah, it's just been the last six months. I think most of these Utah cities are, they're all implementing the same thing. It's just, with this volatility, you have to have something in place to protect it.
So, ultimately, the question is, is do we, do we want to, it's a gut check moment. Do we just do what the power board, um, suggested before kind of this new information? Or do we, do we want to, um, do we want to do something different? Um, knowing that, I mean, we're, I, I joke. Sometimes you gotta make a joke because otherwise you cry. You know, we've been generating power with, with cash, with hundred dollar bills, stoking those in the fire to generate, to generate power. But anyway, so I thought it'd be a good idea to maybe bring it back.
Their, their recommendation was five cents.
Yep.
And what are we at? Five point what?
Five point five, right there in the green, uh, five point five nine two five.
Okay, yeah, right there, okay.
Cali, you scroll all the way to the left.
So Matt, are you, uh, asking for a little less than what initially was implemented?
I'm thinking more.
We're asking for five, which i- implementing is five point.
Five, five point five nine.
Five point five, so it's actually wanting more. We just went with five because we didn't know the exact numbers.
Right.
At that time, so we said, let's just, we were kind of assuming for around five cents and so that's why we went with this flat, five cents.
Okay, so that's what you are recommending.
The power board, yes.
But before, but before you had this new information.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. But realistically, we.
So, what bills go out soon and staff didn't want to override power board and so we thought, well.
And we don't want to override power board either, but.
Right.
We can't, power bills need to go out, but we want to be able to be open and be able to, everybody, the council on the same paper or same page, whatever. We can either lessen it, bring it down a little bit to cushion the thing, or we can go with the, the five recommendation, or we can go back up to the five point, or five point five. And this is not, this is not going back for anything that we've already paid for. This is just the current six months.
Yeah, basically the five point five would, would stop the bleeding as it, you know, as we have it now, wouldn't, wouldn't heal the wound, but it'd stop the bleeding. If we go something less, we're slowing the bleeding, but.
So you suggest the five point five?
Um, you know, I think for the, I think price is gonna soften. Um, I, I think we should ease into it a little bit less. Maybe the four cent range, four or five cent. Um, just, it's our first month, you know, we're gonna see as things move on. Um, but I mean, if we keep anywhere near this, we're gonna be over a million dollars, you know, that we haven't collected.
Didn't you also want to take some time to spread this out, to regain the loss, you know, to make.
Yeah, we, we weren't even talking about the loss.
We're not even, we're not even addressing that.
Yeah, we're just talking about.
That's still come later.
Right now, this six month, what our bills show over the rolling six months.
Okay.
That graph's a little bit hard to see, but the yellow line is basically at the zero dollar. You can see we stayed pretty close to that till the last few months. The, the running, um, under recovery and our power bills have just shot up. But I, 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 summer season is gonna be better because our Hunter plant will be running. So, if we ease into it a little bit now, see what that looks like, see what our rate study comes back like.
Well, then seeing we're, Hunter will be back online. Uh, IPP, we're calling the power back in June?
We actually have a little bit of IPP. IPP has the same problem as Hunter, we're short on coal.
Sure, but they're.
So we're running, we, we're getting a little bit of IPP now.
Now, but not whole.
It'll ramp up in June. Yeah, June, July, August, September.
So they'll be, uh, gonna, we'll be pulling more there, so it should go down, but then also, um, hopefully Lake Powell, so.
Yeah, yeah, they say that our generation from Powell in May could be double what we're receiving now, so.
I saw a report that said that they may go, Lake Powell may go up fifty to ninety feet.
Mm-hmm.
They're projecting.
Awesome, yeah. I think.
But they're letting a lot of water out right now.
I think the month ahead of the survey.
And then our, the Red Creek plant will come online.
Will come on this. Ho- hopefully May, June, sometime, yeah.
And if we, if we bring it down a little bit from this five point five nine two five, which is almost six cents, right?
Right.
If I re, that, it won't hit the customers. Our residents is bad.
Yeah.
Because everything else is so high.
My, my.
You can't even go to the grocery store.
Right. My concern is, I mean, our regular kilowatt hour rate is nine point three. So you add another five and a half, you've more than one and a half times the bill. And that, that's, that's sticker shock for sure, so.
It's just a little bit less of a sticker shock.
I, I kind of like the three and a half, four cent range to start. We've got to do something for sure. Um, five and a half seems like a lot to begin. I mean, you've seen other cities, they're five point two. Um, but, you know.
And for the record, I ran into Rocky Mountain at the city manager conference that I was at. And I said, you guys are, you guys have got to be experiencing this. And they said, oh yeah, this is, this is coming, this is hitting everybody. Um, not just all the small cities that have their own power companies. Um, Rocky Mountain has to go through the, the, um.
Public Service Commission.
Public Service. I'm, I was gonna say PCA and that's wrong. The PSA, PSC, they have to go through them, but. Like it or not, this country is, is going away from coal power mo- mostly for, you know, political reasons and things like that. They're, they're planning on taking all these plants offline, but they're not putting enough plants, new plants online. Um, there's renewables and all of these things, but right now we're, the whole system is a little overexposed to natural gas, which is just seeing massive amounts of volatility. Blame whoever you want to blame. Certainly world rates and what's going on in Ukraine has a massive impact on natural gas. This is impacting the entire, the entire system, so.
Jeremy, is there any, just kind of tailoiling this, any truth that the IPP, that they're backing off to just maybe leave part of it coal and only convert part of it natural gas?
There, there's a push by one legislator to, to keep the coal units, I would say intact, not operational, but there. Um, for potential use for something else later. Um, that just, uh, makes it harder to build the gas plant, which is going right on the same property. So there is, there is a, there is a bill to, uh, and you, and IPA has been working with that legislator that they will try, I mean, as much as they can, keep that there. Um, because who knows what's the future.
So that's probably what I've heard.
They also got to work through California laws with it because California, from what I heard, uh, there was some argument whether they would accept anything from that plant if it wasn't fully shut down. But as far as I'm concerned, just tell California.
Right, I'm sorry.
Go hungry. So, but California buys off most of that power.
Yeah, yeah, and so the nice thing is California.
They buy off most of that power and we don't have the ability to consume all that power, not the whole, all the people that are in that, that deal. But, but, you know, I think frankly.
It could be put in the grid.
Yeah, in, in the operation of that plant, California's actually been a very good partner because they, they take most of power and we can call it back as needed. So, if we don't call it back, they, they pay the bill. And when we need it, we, you know, we have the option. So, they've actually been a pretty good partner in that plant, but, but their legislation does push a lot of things.
They have. The other problem was is we did not, when we did that plan and through all the different contracts and stuff, we did not, um, put in money to decommission that plant. As a result of that, it's about two hundred million dollars to decommission is what I've been told. And we don't have any money to do that. So, we need to keep it going because otherwise you got to decommission it and we all got to come up with the money to decommission it. So we're kind of caught in a rock and hard spot.
There, there's a major transmission system tied to that plant too that needs to stay functional to get power both directions. So there, there needs to be something there.
So, and, and I'm, I'm not even trying, I mean, this is, this is hitting everybody. I, I read an article about Vegas' power and they told them, and I know it has nothing to do with here, but their power bills this summer is gonna be over four hundred dollars.
Per, per home?
Per home.
Hmm.
And, I mean, and that's just your average home, not the big homes, but I mean, it's, it's affecting everyone and we're trying our best to, to minimize the shock for us here. We're really considering everybody.
So with that, if there's no additional discussion, I would entertain a motion and that motion will need to include what that rate will be.
I haven't heard, can I just ask a question? I haven't heard, what's the difference on an, an average impact on a home if you do four cents or five and a half cents? We already know we're in the hole. And it's supposed to soften this over the last six months a little bit, but you can't keep going in the hole. We all know that's not how you run a business. In the city's a business, you're required under your enterprise funds to, for each enterprise fund to be self-sustaining. What, how much money would the difference be if we.
Wasn't, didn't they say Dan, about forty dollars?
Yeah, so if a thousand kilowatt hour, kilowatt hour home at four cents would be forty dollars, at five cents would be fifty dollars per month.
Increase.
Additional.
So the dip, additional, so.
Yeah, so you have your nine point three cents.
They're gonna go from what to what?
You go for, so if you, a thousand kilowatt hours at nine point three cents is ninety-three dollars, plus the forty dollars, you're at one hundred and thirty-three. And so then at the fifty dollars, you've got one forty-three. So, I mean, the five cent difference is ten, I mean, if you go from five cents to four cents, it's about ten dollars.
A month.
More, more.
But if we're at four cents, we're going still in the hole?
Yes.
And is a thousand kilowatt home, what you call an average?
Uh, no, I would say our average is around six fifty, seven hundred. Just thousands easy math for me.
Well, the average home wouldn't be quite as much as you said.
Right, yeah.
And, 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 and I want to point out, there's things that can be done, um, as far as, you know, a lot of times an older, smaller home you would think loo- uses less power, but if it has old appliances, it can use more power. Um, appliances are a big factor, right?
Yes, yes. Big factor. Yeah, changing out appliances, furnaces.
Charging.
Units that are older.
Charging an electric car?
Yeah, li- like, will double your load in sometimes at a house.
Or anything that can, uh, produces heat.
Yes, yes, anything that creates heat. Block heaters on diesel pickups will actually.
Even the light bulbs.
Yeah, LED light bulbs, you know, a whole house retrofit of LED light bulbs can make a difference too.
So, another option, I'm just suggesting it, you guys are the legislature, so I'm just throwing this out. You tell me to shut up, but maybe you ought to, if you want to give a chance for a buffer, start at four and a half cents, go to five in a month, go to five and a half or whatever you need to do, stair step it up to give people three months to kind of adjust their budgets. But, but you can't keep going in the hole.
One advantage of the PCA that was adopted is it does have a five, a, a six month rolling average. So, um, as we get some of these, these power sources back online this summer, our power cost is gonna come back down. Um, if we go a little less now, we can keep it at the same level. And even though it may start to fall, we can recover a little bit from that. Um, it gives us, it gives us, I, I think when we discussed it in the, in the last meeting and adopted it, we referred to it as a shock absorber on a car. But if you're gonna compact that shock on one bump, it's got to, it's got to re-expand and so, um, but we could, we can feather these things, um, the fact that it can be, um, stretched out. So, if we do under collect, even if it says five and a half cents, if we, if we put it at four or three or five, um, when it, when, in the summer, when it starts to come back and the PCA is telling us three, if we're still, if we still manually put that at four, we can now dig ourselves back out of the hole a little bit. And the way that it was adopted with the language in there gives us that ability to do that.
Yeah, if we, if we got back into the sixty thousand dollar UAMs bills, we'd be under a, a cent, you know, for a PCA. But these hundred and eighty thousand dollar bills, when you're not, when you're used to this, you know, fifty to eighty thousand dollar range and all of a sudden in six months, every bill's over a hundred and forty thousand, it's, um.
And just for clarification, I know I asked you this again and a few other people as well, have, how long has it been since we've done a power adjustment?
Um, I, I think in the fifteen year range.
So it's been a fifteen years?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I've been here almost eighteen and I wasn't involved on this end of it as much. I was just out on the line crew, but I didn't deal with rates, so I didn't pay that close attention. But I, I, since, uh, since I've had this job, eight years, we definitely haven't and I, I know it was quite a while before that.
Okay.
Fifteen to seventeen years is my ballpark.
Okay.
I feel we ought to follow the power board's recommendation.
Are you gonna ma- are you making a motion then?
No, I just threw that out.
And they're recommending five?
They're recommending five.
Power board recommended five and we didn't know where it was gonna be at.
So, if we scrolled back to the right, before you see the green five point five nine two, it was at like five point oh something before we implemented, implemented March's numbers. So, at that time, five was where we were thinking and then the March bill was a lot higher than I thought it would be. So it came up to five point, almost five point six.
So you anticipate it's, anticipate it slowing down? What if you're wrong?
Um, look, look at the.
Like what if it doesn't slow down?
Yeah, I mean, I guess if, if, if the coal pile that is stored for the summer at Hunter somehow disappears.
I'm just trying to be like the negative whatever, just the what if.
The forecast, uh, UAMs would provide.
But the PCA would then kick in and kick up the.
But then we'd have to raise it in.
No, it, the PCA, that's why we pass the PCA, because it looks at the last six months to tell us what we should be charging that way.
To rec- to recover the cost.
You don't have to do this every time.
So do you feel, just your own opinion, do you feel like we put it at five?
I, I, I really do. I think, I think we go at what.
I mean, this is out of my wheelhouse, so I am really relying on.
I think we go with what the power board recommended. And like Dan said, if we're fortunate enough to see a decrease in the, in the price that we're paying, then we can keep that increase where it's at and then pull ourselves out of the hole. It's like when we had the, uh, the surcharge on the East Pump.
Yeah.
You know, and then that was able to smooth it out. We kept it to where we were.
Okay.
We're not having to go back to the citizens and, and make another rate hike. So.
Right, and that's my concern.
I think, I think we, we go with the power board.
We.
Their recommendation.
We do have a rate study. We do have a rate study being looked at currently too, which should be available probably June. And so, if our rate study comes back and says, well, we're at nine point three cents, we should be at eleven, we've already made a two cent increase and the PCA number would come down also to, to correspond with our rate. So, they would work together.
And if I remember right, some of those numbers you're giving us, some of those cities were at right around elevenish, right through there, right now?
Um, yeah, there, there's.
Jumped up.
There's quite a few, uh, uh, cities at around the eleven cent range now. I've seen, I've talked to some UHAMS numbers that are at fourteen. Um, I think they're kinda trying to weather the storm, the fourteen, then maybe pull back, but yeah, fourteen cents is not, I mean, eleven, twelve cents is not abnormal in Utah right now.
Judy, when, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. When I was in your office and we're talking about just my house alone, we use mine for an example and I, and I think the five cents, the five whatever we put in, I think it was fifty dollars for the increase. And if we went to four cents, I think it brought it down to thirty-eight eighty.
Yeah, so if you, if you use, if you use nine hundred kilowatt hours at four cents, the additional charge would be thirty-six dollars. If you use nine hundred kilowatt hours at five point five six, or five point, yeah, five point five six, you're at fifty dollars and four cents. So, thirty-six to fifty, so fourteen dollar difference in, in a four cent versus a five point six cent. Uh, just a, maybe a quick clarification, uh, if I remember right, Power Board recommendation was to follow the, the model, like what the model says. The models say in five point five nine two five. So, if we go five cents, I mean, that's, we can adjust however we want, but I, I was thinking, Power Board's recommendation was to follow the model, even though without the March numbers in it, the mo- now the model.
So, that's why you brought it here, because they were making that decision without the knowledge of the past six months.
Well, yeah, we just didn't have the March.
We, we went off a last, we, cause we didn't have this current one, this, that put into it, cause it comes out on the twenty two.
But it went from like five to five point five nine.
What you guys had.
Yeah, it came in worse, yeah.
So, you guys were recommending five, thinking it would be better, and it comes back and we're at five nine.
Five, five.
Five, five nine.
Five, five nine, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically we could come back, smaller amount, three or four cents or whatever, not low, lower the blow, the blow at it or whatever, and then come back up to five if we need to be or something like that down the road. Or leave it at five with a sticker shock or?
I, I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident our UHAMS bills will be better through the summer.
Yeah, won't it adjust itself?
Yeah, the PCA will adjust.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so every month, as soon as we get the UHAMS bill, we go in and input the UHAMS total dollars, the UHAMS net kilowatt hours and the kilowatt hour, uh, sold retail. And that gives us the number and our gener- and our hydro generation from Center Creek.
So, what we're doing though, we're buying from the open market. We're not buying from our designated areas. We have got a contract, or we get a better price for it than open market, but yet we're still buying it from the open market. That's why it's so much more, because these other, our normal power plants are offline, or not producing as much.
So, you're on the Power Board, what do you recommend?
I pay a bill too.
I know, it's like, you know, I, I have a hard time.
You are too, Sharon.
I know, but I have a hard time and, and I talked to Dan about this, that there's so many families just hurting. And fourteen dollars, the difference between, you know, the four, whatever it was.
Four cents and five and a half, yeah.
That's a lot of money to a family.
Granted, but.
But it's a lot of money for the city.
Right, but the city is a business.
I know.
But now, maybe you throw this something out, uh, as you, what is it gonna do to businesses?
I know, I.
And, I mean, we're in a catch twenty-two. We really are. Yes, it is. It's a very large hike for a business.
Yeah, it's based on your kilowatt hour usage.
And I.
We can just shut the cabinet shut down, turn all the breakers off, you won't use any power, we won't have to charge you anything.
I, I myself would rather have it slightly lower, even if it's just fourteen dollars, and extend it out, the payback period. To at least help, just not the families, but the businesses too. Cause i- i- if it hurts the businesses, they're not gonna do as much work and they're not gonna be able to pay their bills. So, I mean, it's, it's a catch twenty-two and I hate what's going on with this country with, with money. It's hitting everybody. But I think, I just feel, I guess, cause I'm a woman and I just feel for families. That's, you know.
Yeah, and there, there's no harm in easing into it. I mean, we, other than, you know, we become more under collected, we lose more money.
I know you and I talked about that. That probably the ten more in debt.
We, we lose more money, but, but the, the model's there to help recover that, the model's there to adjust, so.
But we're not talking about, so, but we're not talking about lowering it. We're talking about keeping it until we can get ourselves out.
We can. We can, yeah.
Yeah, we can use them.
But it'll correct yourself.
You, you could, you could go at three.
The market.
Where it's brand new to us, we could start at three, three and a half cents, four cents, whatever, I mean.
We'd be going to the hole right now.
I mean, in the next war.
Well, I know that, yeah.
But then, like he was saying, if we adjust it, if it, the market goes down and we keep it at, let's say, the PCA only says we need to be at two, we keep it at three, that's gonna make up the difference.
Don't make up the difference.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That'll be, but that's what we do.
Yeah, so that, but that's what I was getting at, it's like, we're not going to adjust our, we're gonna keep it until we dig ourselves out, basically.
We'll adjust the PCA every month.
Yeah, we will adjust it.
Yeah.
So, if it, if we need, if it comes up next month and comes up as, as six, we need to do something, you know? Or if it comes down, we don't, you know?
We can leave it at four if it comes down and we'll still be making a little bit, not as much.
Right.
But you're still, you're still helping the families and, and that.
So, we can go with the recommendation or lower it or raise it.
I don't wanna be right here anymore. I'm just kidding. Ah, that's.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a tough place for, for everybody.
That's why they pay you a hundred and forty bucks a month.
I know, we make a lot of money.
Forty-one bucks a month.
Hundred and forty-one.
Still trying to figure out how you get that much. Cause I'm good looking, I don't know why. But I think we need to, we've got, that's what they're paying us for, we gotta make a decision.
What's your recommendation? What do you recommend as far as you?
I, I personally don't wanna go below three and a half. I think we need, we need to, I, I mean, I would prefer in the four, four and a half cent range.
I think, I think four is the lowest we should go.
Um, we've gotta start somewhere.
You gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna be so low that we're just, you know.
I would say let's start at four.
Make that, I'll second that.
All right, friends. I will make a motion that we, I don't even know what I'm doing.
You want me to make it for you?
Implement a PCA of four cents for this upcoming billing.
Go for it.
One thing I wanna do is, is. I, I, what do you call it, th- th- those committees are put there for a reason. I don't wanna all feel like we're overruling those committees.
Right.
But we were going on numbers unknown at that time. And how much it really kicks into, but we, I wanna rely on those committees too, you know, um, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I also feel this is like an emergency type decision.
But it is. We, I think it nee- maybe needs to be adjusted, we, and that's why we wanted to bring it to everybody here and let everybody else know about it. And not just, there it is, then everybody's gonna call the city office complaining and yelling, cause we.
But we gotta make sure we don't override committees all the time either. But this is, but I'll make a.
This is a special circumstance. I can do it, it's fine.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we set the PCA at four cents.
Per kilowatt hour.
Per kilowatt hour.
For this bill.
For this bill, this current bill.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Right, motion carries.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, item number twelve is the Arbor Day Declaration. Dan, is that you?
No.
David, is that you? Arbor Day Declaration?
Well, I, yeah, I can do it, sure. Um, do you have that where you can put?
We have Arbor Day on tomorrow at one o'clock and.
Right, I just looked for the flyer. Oh.
Meeting in front of the high school to plant five trees.
Well, okay. Yeah, you know the trees that are missing on Main Street.
What, there's trees missing on Main Street?
Okay. Anyway, uh, they're, the students are gonna get together, they've already dug the holes, I think, cause John, the city, some of the city guys have dug the holes. They're gonna meet tomorrow across the street here at the high school. And this is their Arbor Day, I guess, celebration or recognition. And they asked that anybody would like to come, anybody'd like to participate, please come and, and join in with the students. And anybody from the city, any community members, anybody that'd like to help plant those trees back on Main Street in commem- commemoration of Arbor Day, tomorrow at one o'clock.
So, the vote would be to declare that to be our Arbor Day this year?
I thought we already did that.
I don't know why it's on action.
No, we didn't have it.
Hmm.
It was supposed to come last meeting and we did, and I forgot, and it was on this.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion to.
Well, I'll make a motion to declare, what is that, April, Arbor Day, April.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, um, I guess that's it.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Dan, I think.
I just wanted to say props to Linda Smith, she's the chairperson of the Tree Committee. She went and got the trees, um, one, one of the things we're trying to do as we, as we keep a, a healthy urban forest, is really mix up the species of trees. And so, she's got a, a bunch of different trees that should be really healthy in that, in that place. We have the ash tree is un- is under attack by the moth and we have too many of the same exact type of tree. So, this will be a nice mix of different types of trees. And, uh, Linda puts in a lot of time and I think she makes even less. But, um, anyways, thanks to Linda for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and.
Rochelle.
Rochelle.
And, yeah, these trees have been, like Dan was saying, have been worked through the group, the Shade Tree Committee, but also the state road and the school and everybody's in agreement. These trees are what needs to be planted here. So, it, it'll be good. Thank you.
So, moving on to action meeting, item number thirteen, the Bauer Road LLC annexation, it's what we had our public hearing about. This is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero four dash zero one. So, I would entertain a motion to approve that annexation request.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the Bauer Road LLC annexation, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh four dash oh one.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
With my roll call. Jim, I'm Councilman Shirtless.
Jim Shirtless, aye. Matt Gale, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
Rochelle Toppam, aye.
David Burton, aye.
Right, motion carries, thank you. Moving to item number fourteen, the Long Term Disability Pilot Program. Callie Bassett, our HR and recorder will give us that information to vote on.
So, as you saw in your packet, I received an email from P E H P that, um, basically stated that the Utah Legislature has created a three-year pilot program as part of HB one oh five. Uh, which expands the long-term disability coverage of mental disability. Um, cur- currently, the long-term disability benefits with P E H P ends after two years for those with mental disability. Um, this expansion means that, um, employees with mental disability who complete their first two years of disability benefits during the three-year pilot period. May continue receiving disability benefits beyond two years when they are unable to work in, in any occupation. Um, but this, this, um, pilot program increases our LTD premium rate from the point five percent that we're currently paying. To point six eight percent of an eligible employee's salary from July first, two thousand twenty-three through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Um. I did some calculations at how much that would cost to do that. Um, these bottom lines, so I just went back. I just went back, um, with the, the invoices that we've paid so far this fiscal year. And, um, with, um, so far, we've paid six thousand six seventy-four fifteen in our lo- uh, long-term disability benefits. If, um, taking the same, um, invoices that we received, if we did the point zeros, uh, the points, the six point eight percent, zero six eight percent. Um, that would increase that to nine thousand seventy-six ninety-six, had we paid that, that rate. So, basically, it increases, and I kinda figured out what the, just an approximate for the year would be. Um, it would increase our bill almost three thousand dollars. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that. We have to make a decision. I have to return this information to P E H P by May twelfth. And so, um, what we can do is either decide we want to participate in this po- uh, pilot program, or we can opt out of it. And so, because it is a budgetary thing, that's why I brought it to you.
Is there any penalty if we opt out of it?
No, we would stay at the, um, at the five percent or the point five percent, but, but there is no penalty.
And we have two years now and it's just adding on that.
It was just add a, a.
Thirty year, right.
Mm-hmm. During that three-year period.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So, the option is to opt out or to?
Or to, to opt in.
That's the motion I would entertain.
And opting is, is almost three thousand dollars more a year.
Uh-huh, yeah.
So, is the, is the mental care part of this, and I apologize, um, I was, I would say that Callie and I haven't spoken much in the last two weeks.
No.
It's accurate, cause we've been running around like crazy. Um, is this only if somebody is on long-term disability that mental health is option? Or is this a new mental health thing that would be available for current employees? How does that, how does that work, do you know?
I don't know. I would have to ask. From what I understood, I don't think that our plan covers mental health, but I don't know that for certain.
Do we need to vote on this tonight?
Well, um, what's the first meeting in May?
Be the eleventh.
It'd be the eleventh?
Mm, and you'd have to have it by, uh, Friday?
I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to turn it in the next day.
Can we, can we find out if ours, if we have mental health now?
Well, I think that what we have is, um, I thi- I think we may have something for public safety through Blumquist.
Blumquist Health.
Hail.
That's our employee.
That's for First Reserve.
That's our EPA. Um, we, well, that's for all employees, or all benefited employees.
Okay.
There is mental health, um, they can, they can reach out to, um, mental, what am I trying to say? To like, um, counselors or therapists, they can reach out for help there. And we pay for that, the city pays for that.
Well, maybe I'll make a, just a suggestion, um, we, we could dig into it a little bit. We are gonna have a public, uh, I mean, a budget meeting, which is, work meeting, which is public, which we could, we could have a little bit more details, dig into it and put it on the next action agenda. If, if, Callie, if you feel comfortable with that, I don't wanna.
Oh, I do, that's fine.
Put you in a tight time.
No, that's, that's just fine. We also, um, are meeting with, um, Bill Phelps and Shelley Cox from Hub, who are our brokers. And we'll be meeting with them, um, the beginning of next week. Um, and they would have in, I'm sure they would have information on the mental health portion of our plan, our current plan. So, if you, if you'd like to wait, that's just fine.
I would feel better waiting.
So, would that be something as I, as mayor, I can table until the next meeting or is that a motion that would need to happen?
I would, I would move to table, uh-huh.
Okay. All right.
A motion.
Okay, so I would move to table this item on the agenda until we can get additional information?
Okay, but you can't make the motion.
Oh, and so I would entertain a motion to do so.
Yeah, but we.
I'll make a motion to table the, the item until next. I'll make, I'll make a motion to table the, the item until next...
I'll second.
Next council.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Alright, item number fifteen. And then, um, was our city manager going to introduce the topic? Or how did you want to do that?
Well, so I just asked Dave, I'm not sure what Dave has to present, but I just asked Dave if, if he would be okay with me going first and doing what you had asked me to do, and that was to give a little bit of background on the pickleball. Um, I mean, this, this conversation is, will ultim- the, the agenda item will ultimately is a, is a presentation, or I don't know if it's a presentation, but something from David Burton on parks, pool and recreation all combined. But what has blown up on social media and was probably gotten most people here is that conversation on pickleball. So I, and I didn't want to have a, you know, back and forth, you know, during, certainly earlier. And I don't know exactly what sort of public comments you want to allow, but, but I can definitely give a background if you would like.
I would like that, too.
Okay, um, and we love, we love when the public is, is, um, involved and active. There's been a lot of things, um, that were out there. And some of it is, is misconceptions. Of course, we know how fun of a place, um, Facebook can be, um, for good and for bad and for, um, distractions and sometimes all over the place. Um, first of all, I wanted to, um, myself apologize to the Mortonsens. Um, I've, I've talked to Yeta a few times this week. And she said, you know, you, you, you almost made it seem in your letter. So I wrote the letter that went out that, um, that you were, that, that the Mortonsens were endorsing this thing and were certainly not. And anyway, so I wanted to apologize if that was the, the, um, the way that that came across. Um, background, um, of course, the community has been obsessed with doing something with the pool. That has probably been the hu- the biggest issue that has generated the most, um, interest, concern, emotion, um, why aren't we doing something for, since I've been here, since I've been around? Um, as we've been looking at the pool, and we'll talk about the pool, and I don't want to get ahead of ourselves with the pool. But, um, even not very recently, as we've been looking at different options with the pool, we knew that whatever happened was gonna take some time and was gonna take a lot of money. Um, the mayor was, uh, was made aware that the, the county tourism grant, um, would probably be really friendly to a consideration about pickleball. I think sometimes we, we like, when we, especially when we're focused on something, we think of things as being mutually exclusive. Pickleball and the pool are not mutually exclusive. Now, to the extent, if they were located at Lyons Park, then they would, could potentially be on the same grounds. Other than that, they're not really related, other than time spent by staff to do different things. So, um, without taking away from the pool and pursuing that project, um, uh, this grant came up. Um, the pickleball community was really insistent that we don't, we don't let that opportunity pass. If you'll remember, did we have a special meeting? Because we didn't want to miss the grant window, because we tabled it. I mean, it was pretty traumatic for this, the council, the staff, everything. People were like, you can't let that grant go. So we had tabled it, the, the next time we were gonna meet, we would have missed the opportunity to have that grant. So we had a special meeting to have that, to, to decide whether to apply for that grant. The c- the council decided to do it. We applied for four hundred thousand dollars. Technically, I'm rounding three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, because that's an estimate that we had to build six courts. Um, and we went to the board that, that does those awards. With little did we know, at the time, Cedar City was also building pickleball courts and was asking for grant money from the exact same board. Their project, they had bid out, was nine hundred thousand dollars to build eight courts, which included some things that we would not need to put if we located it where we were talking about, in Lyons Park. The reason why it wouldn't cost us quite so much as it cost them is, um, and this is, uh, the, the mayor found plans that were done in twenty seventeen, prior council. I don't think anybody on the council was there at that time. Josh Jones, the prior city manager, and two mayors ago, Don Landis was the mayor. And they had plans and, and, and after, talking to the Mortonsens, they're like, what are you talking about? We've never heard of that either. Those plans were titled Construction Improvements to Lyons Park. They included the, the, um, parking lot improvement that was done, the bathroom improvement that was done. And they, if everybody remembers the old surface, the, the concrete surface of the, um, gazebo was slicker than ice. In fact, we kept having people get hurt.
Yeah, the pavilion.
They also put a coating on that, that you can see now, it's like a pinkish traction coating to, so people would not stop. So that project also included a two-pickleball court, but the courts were a little bigger because they had basketball, um, standards also on them and a large sand volleyball pit. Th- that was there at that time. It sounds like that wasn't like, at least as far as the people can remember, like, really hashed out in the public. I'm sure, you know, I haven't gone back to look at the minutes, but I'm sure the city council talked about it in earnest. There was budget money appropriated. Like I said, some of the improvements were done. Um, I don't know why the courts were not finished. So, back to the story, where we looked at doing something. We already had construction plans that would need a little bit of a modification for getting rid of the sand volleyball courts, adding up to, and I say up to quite literally, depending on funding, up to eight courts. Um, as, uh, I think it was Vicky Hicks said, um, right, right now with only two hundred thousand dollars, um, we're like really far from, from reaching the number that we need to build eight courts. Um, since we already had these construction plans, we would need to spend about five thousand dollars to update the construction plans so that we could go ahead and put something out to bid. In the meantime, the m- the mayor and I have applied for a grant from A A R P for how much?
And T-Mobile, sixty and fifty.
Sixty thousand and a T-Mobile grant for fifty thousand to try to get some additional dollars to go towards this pickleball court. The decision to build the pickleball courts and to build them at Lyons Park has officially not been made yet by the city council. The city council officially approved to go after the grant and to see what other money we could get. So, um, that brought us to, um, the decision, where do we go from here? Economic development was like, do this already. Um, and so we came to council, we said, okay, do we, should we spend the additional five thousand dollars? During this time, as we were talking, we've talked to pickleball experts, we've talked to other cities, we've talked to people that run, um, pickleball complexes and other people that are not directly related to pickleball. And it came to our attention, we still, what was not on our radar was that somebody might object to it being there. Like, that has never come up in the process. But what came to our, our radar was noise may be a problem. And so we thought, you know what, let's make sure that the citizens who live directly around the park that would be impacted the most, let's send them a letter and let's make sure we request their input. And if everybody is supportive of it at Lyons Park, and, and in my letter, that, back to my letter, I mentioned the Mortonsens, thinking I was doing honor to the Mortonsens. I didn't even, I did not realize, sometimes you don't know there's a, there's a sliver or a burr under somebody's skin that is long there until you go poking it. Um, the mayor and I, and I, and as we talked with the council, we had discussed this, this par- this park was given to the city for, um, active recreation was what the, literally the words I had always heard. Um, hadn't heard the word green space. Um, we, we're aware that the head start thing that was put in by a previous council and everything, that, that that was a, a source of, like, real pain for the family. Like, that was not something that they wanted. Legally, the city can do whatever it wants there. But besides legally, there's like a family that donated this and they're sitting here saying, we really wish you hadn't have done that and please don't do this new thing as well. So, um, because the letter came out, of course, this has blown up on social media. Um, we are where we are now. Um, where we have partial plans. Oh, one other thing that's very important. Nine hundred thousand dollars for Cedar City Courts includes some upgrades to take a, a, basically a bare dirt lot and put in, like extend, because it's near a, a facility, they would have to kind of extend the asphalt, put in curb and gutter, put a, a handicap ramp, they have to tie it into the city water system, the city sewer system, and they have to do some paths and things like that. Those things actually quite add up to, to be a fair amount of money. One advantage that we have, why we, why we thought the Lyons Court Park would be great is because the parking lot has already been improved, we have the bathrooms right there. Really, the only thing you actually have to build is just the courts. So we're, and we don't have to spend as much money to have the, the construction drawings drawn up, drawn up by an engineer. So if we build them somewhere else, they're literally gonna cost more money because, depending, unless we had another spot that was equally as improved, that all we would have to do is just the courts. If we build them, um, um, at the Valentine Sports Complex, um, depending, there's maybe a couple of sites that we've identified, um, we're gonna have to do different levels of additional work besides just building the courts. But in almost any other place we put it, we know it's gonna cost some more. We don't know how much more. Um, the other thing I wanted to say is, um, a big part of the discussion that the city council has had, as we've talked about this several times, was we love green space, but Lyons Park is really hard to grow green grass on. It's very rocky soil, our park sky fertilizes the heck out of it and literally waters the heck out of it to try to keep it green. We struggle there. And so as we're trying to be water-conscious, we're thinking, is this something that would actually help the city save water? Now, if you're saving water and putting in something else, you're obviously getting rid of green space. And, and obviously, there's a, there's a, there's a trade-off there. So, um, that's the backstory. A decision has not been made yet. This is not mutually exclusive from the pool. We're gonna talk about potential pool stuff, um, but that's where we're at. No decision yet. But I'm, for one, A, I'm sorry if I've offended the Mortonsens, I really am. I did not realize that I was jumping up and down on a, on a raw nerve by sending that letter out. But I'm, I'm really glad we did that. One of the conversa- one of the things that came out of my conversation with Yeta twice was even though we have our public meetings, this is where the city does its business. Um, the public oftentimes doesn't know what we're doing. And, you know, we can't just send out letters for everything we're doing. But as Yeta reminded me, we send out a newsletter. A newsletter is a good way to communicate things that we're doing. Social media, while toxic, is a good way to get information out to almost all generations, but specifically your younger generations. So I'm gonna make a commitment that I think the city can do a better job trying to get the word out. Um, we can't control the rumor mill. It's, it's always gonna be there, but we can at least try to be forward pushing with some of this information. And I'm, at least, I'm, I'm really glad we did send a letter and ex- and, and brought out this concern. And, and no matter what, everybody in this room is not gonna agree. Um, if we do pickleball courts at Lyons Park, four, six, eight, if we put pickleball courts somewhere else, if, if we don't do pickleball courts, like, not, not everybody is gonna agree. This process is hard. Um, I think that we also need to, just now, I'm just saying my personal opinion. I think we need to make sure that we have a good way as a city, and I expressed this to the Mortonsens. It's very difficult for the city when we're not really sure what the strings were attached. We're, um, you know, it's the city's property, we want to honor them and we want to do stuff that would be good, yet we have to make decisions that are gonna benefit all of the whole community at the same time. So we need to figure out exactly how we're going to move forward with anything we do, whether it be pickleball courts, pool, whatever with, with that, with that park. Um, we're, we're six generations removed from that original donation. And clearly, it still means something and we still need to be sensitive to that. So that's my long tirade. I hope I didn't steal any of your Thunderdave...
None whatsoever.
Thunderdave, that's kinda got a ring to it.
(laugh) Yeah.
But I wanted to give that background.
Are you...
Microphone off.
No, we'll, uh, we'll probably need you. Okay, I'll let you know.
Microphone background.
I'm glad you cleared that up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if anyone wonders why it's Councilman Burton, it's because his responsibility is the parks, that's his council assignment. So he's kind of been following along with this for three years and four months now. And the parks are his passion.
Okay, well, thank you, Callie, because I will probably need help. Uh, I appreciate this opportunity. Uh, I appreciate Dan Jessen, you can see he, I think he communicates with the public very well. And I appreciate that. He, uh, he does a better job than I, so he may need to chime in. Uh, we've had a lot of, like the mayor says, the reason I'm here is because the parks, recreation and the pool have been my responsibility. And there's been a lot going on. Um, there's been a lot been said about all the parks. So I just wanted to kinda see if we can, uh, present some facts and hopefully alleviate some of the concerns and misconceptions that are involved in these different parks. Uh, I'm gonna start with the Meeks Pond, and I hope this thing works. Yeah, there it is, okay. Uh, this is small, but this is the Meeks Pond, right here. And as you all know, we, um, had a, oh, a grant from the D W R to dredge this pond. And we dredged this pond last year. And, uh, then last fall and winter, we turned the water, which comes down this channel right here, into the pond. It ran into the pond all winter, overflows right here. Goes down to the Evans Pond, if people are familiar with it, referred to as that, down on the Gap Road. Uh, we built prior to dredging the pond, a diversion channel right around this area here. So we diverted the water while this is being dredged. Of course, at that time, the farmers were using most of it. And anyway, after the pond, like I said, we refilled it. It sat there all winter, it was clean water. Uh, oh gosh, I forgot one of my objects. I had a jar of water from the Meeks Pond, I was gonna show everybody. But it is not that dirty. It looks like a jar of, as Dan described, just some old lemonade or something.
Yeah, it looked like lemonade, looked like lemon water, watered-down lemonade.
Okay. So anyway, after, you know, the, the winter, the pond filled up. But when we, uh, saw that it was running dirty, this water was diverted again in the diversion channel. And we left it out, but as it was out, we saw that the pond wasn't holding, it is seeping. So it wasn't, you know, holding. So anyway, uh, during this time, uh, D W R, who is in charge of the, the urban fishery and the fish and the, this part of the Meeks Park project, uh, they, they planted the fish. That's what I was trying to emphasize, the city did not plant those fish. And this was done when one, when Richard Hepworth, who I've been working with, was out of town on vacation. And I tried to get in touch with him and I texted him and told him that we had to, uh, that the water wasn't holding and to wait until we see what happens about, you know, timing to plant those fish. But a colleague had gone ahead and planted the fish. So I contacted him, he says, okay, because this pond is deep and there will be no threat to the fish. So we were monitoring this pond and it did start seeping and, and losing capacity. So anyway, one of the employees, Justin Dally, who's very diligent, was worried about these fish and so he, he turned the water back into the pond. And he has to do that by moving an earthen dam, moving it from the diversion ditch and, and moving it back and forth. So that's how the pond got some dirt in it again. We had comments that said that this, this, uh, diversion ditch was breached and wasn't working, it was leaking and seeping. No, it was intentional. And so...
David, can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
You said there's seeping on that pond. Is there a concern about that? Where's the water going or is it just natural?
Just natural.
Okay, so we're not, we're not even.
We should get recharge credit on our groundwater plan.
We're gonna ask for recharge.
I just didn't make sure it's not.
I think what happened was when that was dredged, there was a clay layer and we questioned that and wanting to know if we need to reline it. They thought it'd be okay, but we obviously, or they did, whoever, breached that layer a little bit. But from this dirty water going in there and Justin is innovative. He put a, uh, valve in there, in a three inch pipe, so he wouldn't have to go in here and do, you know, move this earthen dam from this point right here. I'm prob- yeah, let's go, I'm shaking, I'll get it. Anyway, he had to, he put that valve in there so he can turn it on and off as we see if there's, it's going down and, and so forth. But it's deceiving. Now you go and look at it and it's clearing up and that sediment's going down the bottom. But we're also noticing it isn't seeping as bad. So that sediment helped seal that pond. So it was a good thing. It was a good thing. So we'll watch this and see what happens this spring with water and so on. But the DWR will put more fish in there. They put about five hundred fish in that, rainbow trout. And they're okay. The fish are okay and they're not in, the water's not that dirty and they're fine. But, uh.
Dave, do you wanna talk about the, the design we have? Cause this is just our temporary way to.
Yeah.
To move that water in and out when we want to.
Okay, do you want this area right here?
Uh huh.
Okay, we're gonna ha- go in and we're gonna have to put in a, what would you call it? A, a valve, or not a valve, but you know, well, kind of a, a head gate type system.
Head gate, cement box, um.
Yeah.
I've, I've found a.
Go ahead, Dan.
I've, I've found, I have a design which will be easy. We won't have to cast, we won't have to bring in a concrete person to build a really fancy diversion thing. We can take a precast concrete box. We, we, um, we got a head gate for half price. We, we mount the head gate on it, put an inlet and outlet at different, um, elevations, which we have a, right elevations to work there. Um, it's just a question of whether we'll have the remaining money in this year's budget to do it or whether we'll have to do it in next year's budget. Um, and we also have to do the outlet at a concrete level so that we can, um, keep the water level at the right amount for our water right. But both of those projects are designed, ready to go. It's just a matter of timing. We've been focusing on a lot of other frankly, higher priority things. But, but this is not the long-term solution, is moving an earthen dam back and forth or the small valve that he put in, which was good, it's just temporary.
Right, thank you. And to, you know, comment on our, we had this, this is the area that was surveyed by, uh, Steve Woolsey and to, to basically verify the city's water right, which is based on the area, the surface area of storage, not the depth. Depth doesn't matter, so, and it's, it's within the parameters of the city's water right. And so this outlet that Dan talks about's got a, it, it, there's an elevation set. Steve, uh, surveyed that so that we, you know, when this is poured, it will, as long as that level is maintained, will be within the city's water right. And so that's, you know, how we're gonna do that. This area on those pictures on some of that, uh, whatever you call it, social media, uh, that'll be cleaned up and taken care of when we, you know, install that outlet. That's gotta be done. And that, uh, oh, I do appreciate this thing, an individual who said, did comment and said something about, well, and they're referring to that, those weeds and stuff. They says, oh, you know, I'm just gonna get a group together and we're gonna, you know, take care of this. Well, that's the attitude we need because these parks, they're hard to, to maintain, uh, from the city standpoint. This park I'd say needs to be divided into three phases. You've got the urban fishery, you've got this area over here, which I'm gonna talk about, and then this area up by the arboretum and where the, they, oh, Councilman Shertlift and his group had the, the garden and the, you know, some of the, the, you know, the fruit trees and the things where they, they showed some of the native species and things there. But that's the area that we, this is the area we need some volunteers and some help to clean up, is this area right here. This area, if you've been down there and looked, has been seeded with natural, or native plants, native grasses and what they call pollinator mix, which is flowering plants. I don't know how to work this. Can you go to, Crystal says there's some other pictures on here. I don't know where they are. But anyway.
Click to the next one. Click to the next one.
Okay, there they are. There's, I just thought for interest, this shows that area. We went up there and my family's over here. Where is that? And then this is myself and grandkids. We spent a couple of afternoons, you know, harrowing and getting this gra- or Justin helped grade it. Justin Dally's been very helpful. We left some contour there, so it appeals to the native species. But this just shows that, uh, you know, that area's been seeded. Ron Roth do- donated the seed and he's taking care of the water right now. You know, Justin helped furnish some sprinklers, Justin Dally, I furnished some sprinklers, hoses and things and so. Anyway, th- you know, this is just showing what we need is some community help to come into these parks. This area right here is what we're gonna have to have help with. Now, we are gonna work on this channel of getting the water so that it continuously flows. We're gonna have to look, we're looking at maybe placing a pipe in the original channel, an HDP, two inch pipe or something, to try and make sure that we have consistent water to, to sustain that urban fishery. The other option is to come right here, come over and tap into the, that line and pipe that, you know, in from, I think it's what? Second West to four hundred west. But, uh, we're gonna try and look at different options and hopefully we can work something on this channel. So that's kind of the Meeks Pond. Is there any questions on the Meeks Pond? We just need some, some help in this area right here especially. Hopefully this, if all goes well, will become a, a Garden of Eden. I don't know, we're just hoping so that at least get something that will keep the weeds down. But it is native and it does comply and we're just looking and then eventually may have to come in and do some trail work like they had and so forth. But at least it starts the process. Um, we'll just move up to the Lyons Park. Now, we had pretty good discussion. I appreciate Dan talking about this Lyons Park. Uh, as he, I think Dan covered it pretty well as to why this is the area that they're talking about putting the pickleball courts and a lot of the reasoning and so on behind that. And so I don't know if I need to go into that anymore, other than this shows, I don't know.
Dave, let me just say something else on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
We, we, we've received a lot of comments. I'm not sure we're done receiving comments. And, and again, that decision's not ready to be made yet anyways. We're still waiting to find out if we get the other money, um, from these other grants. We have some time, um, I don't wanna steal your thunder, there's gonna be higher priorities. But, um, please, let's keep the pickleball conversation going and, and I'd like to put it on in a future agenda item and, and make sure that the council gets all the comments that came, that comes in.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, this is ongoing and this is what I was gonna allude to, but I don't see it on here. Here's the Valentine Sports Complex and I don't think it's showing what I wanted to see. Well, we'll just have to, here's two hundred north and, uh, my house is right here. And this area right there is in front of that recharge pond that was constructed. Yeah, that's right, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay, that's an area that could be considered for the pickleball courts because the parking here, the restrooms that are over here across the street and so forth, that's an area that could be considered. The other, there's another area, I don't know, I didn't get very good pictures, I apologize. This is a dry run. I just threw this, I've been, I won't even tell you what happened today, but anyway. Um, right over here in this area, there's a, you know, where those old sheds and things are, there is a possibility of putting them there too and working something with the county in a cooperative kind of an effort. And then to address another use could be this area, if you didn't put pickleball. One thing about this, there's gonna be dust and problems. Cause you've got this retention pond here, believe me, I know I lived there. Anyway, you're gonna deal with dust there. And as Dan explained, probably more expense if you have to go through the planning and, and the projects.
We'd have to have the construction drawings, probably start from scratch at either of those locations. Um, the one advantage of the one that you mentioned right on two hundred is you are right across the street from, from parking and bathrooms.
Mm-hmm.
So really, you're just talking about how you would tie it in to two hundred and, you know, maybe putting a crosswalk or figuring out how some way that, that people could easily walk across that road and, and get there to play, so it could be done.
So there, you know, there's pros and cons to both. This does not reflect, I had another picture out, I think you sent, these are some I, I don't know. Anyway, there is one that showed this in its true character during the summer when we don't have this phenomenal amount of moisture and, you know, come out of a exceptional winter and a cool spring. This is just brown. I mean, that's a fact. They have a very difficult time to keep it watered. But there's another use here that if you don't put pickleball, could be the pump track that's been proposed. You know, the bicycle pump track thing. And the one thing about, I'll just hold this in, I will be probably the only one that would qualify to be contacted within that certain distance or whatever. And I do not have any opposition to whatever is placed there, so.
Don't send you a letter is what you're saying?
Yeah, that's.
I'll probably find some way to offend the Burton clan. I've, I'm, I don't know what I don't know around this place. I'm slowly learning these lessons, so.
So anyway, but there's one, I want, one other option that needs to be, about the pickleball courts that should be discussed is the option of working out a cooperative arrangement with the school district. They are going to build this eight million dollar complex, multi-purpose complex. It will be bid out this next winter and they'll start construction next spring of year. So Principal Bailey indicated that the principal item that they're concerned about is having somebody to manage the programs. So that brings to point another point that we need to discuss or is a recreation director. If we do this with the pickleball, the, the high school, if, you know, we could throw in that money that we got on the grants, you know, a few pennies against their eight million or whatever, but it would give us a vested interest. We could, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but we could, uh, match those, I mean, maybe they'd throw in a little more cause they seem to be amenable to this working with the schools.
So, and, and I forgot as I was just off the cuff giving the background, th- there's conversations that we've had with the school district. We had, who was, who was all there? The, you had the principal, we had their business manager, Todd Hess, and was the, was the superintendent there? Their secondary schools got, they had, they had a lot of people. They, um, this was part of the school bond that was passed a while ago. They're gonna build a building which will primarily function as a lunchroom and a multi-purpose for, for the schools there. And the, the concept was if we could come forward with some participation, what, what a lot of small communities are finding, that if the city and the school can work together, they can have a multi-purpose building that can serve multiple purposes. Now, Principal Ba- Bailey has been very clear, it would be a school building first and foremost. They would have full scheduling, it would be used all day during the day by the school. But if we wanted to have like a rec program and, and really they wanna have, have a, a person, they don't wanna have a, you know, a, a committee or kind of haphazard or something. If there is a rec director that could, could do a rec program, that, they're definitely saying, yeah, you know, in the evenings, on weekends, you could schedule city rec stuff, um, in a facility like that. It's not gonna be a massive facility. It would, I think, the way it's roughly designed right now, it's gonna have two basketball courts. Isn't that what they said? So you could overlay pickleball lines on those courts. Of course, you have to do what, what they do up at the, the fairgrounds where you, you take the nets on, take the nets off. You'd have, pickleball would have to compete with basketball scheduling and different rec programs, but a city rec program could work. And we've talked with the school district and, and one of the advantages, so there's advantages, disadvantages to all these things. Disadvantage, you're not gonna have access to the facility twenty-four seven. You're gonna have limited access, but when you do have access, it'd be a cool facility. It'd be indoors. A lot of pickleball people say indoor pickleball's great, year round. A lot of the older generation says we really like to play in climate controlled spaces. Of course, outdoor pickleball is a big phenomenon as well, especially when the weather's a little iffy. The youth still love to go play on it. Um, so I just wanted to say, we have fully explored that. They're far from being able to do that. We did talk to the county on this grant and said, if we don't end up building courts, would you be amenable, amenable to updating our grant to allow us to shift that money to, to the school district? It is within the constraints of that grant that the money could go to the school district. And it could be our, like, like you said, pennies against dollars component that we add in it. And, and really with like the two hundred thousand, if we're gonna partner with you, we wanna see that you have a program that is being actively managed. We have a one person that we can go to. We have an entity that is covered by liability insurance, that'll clean up after itself, that'll be a partner with us. Um, and so that is another option.
So Dan, let me ask you a question, what you said that, so if you partnered with the school, the public would not be able to use those pickleball courts probably during the school that, school hours?
No.
No, not at all. It would be evening times, weekends, summers, but summer's when they do their maintenance too. So they'll block out a week or two, you know, refinish the floors, stuff like that. So we would have limited access. Basically, we would work a schedule with them that says, okay, from six to nine o'clock these nights of the week, it could turn over to the city rec program. Now you look at a city rec program and you're gonna say, okay, what hours are we gonna allow pickleball, open play, tournament play? Um, um, what's the other kind where they, where they have organized, um.
League.
League play. Or you say, okay, but Tuesday, Wednesday's gonna be basketball, Thursday, whatever the case may be. So it, that's kind of what that concept would be. Um, pretty cool facility, but anytime it's like optimized, not for one thing, it's gonna be less good at everything, right? If it's like, if they're dedicated pickleball courts, you're gonna design them for pickleball. They're gonna be like pickleball courts. A facility like this, you're gonna have basketball lines, pickleball lines. It's gonna probably, most likely be a basketball, which changes the nature of the gameplay, um, but it's definitely an option.
Question on that. I know the school district did, um, while going off, they're still doing it, they would shut them down during the summer to save the power in those facilities. Are we, would be able to save that?
So they would expect a cost share agreement with us. If we're, if we're charging for pickleball league or pickleball memberships and passes and we have the facility in the evening, they're gonna want our rec program to help with power bill. Just like when we're, we're, we're hoping to light the baseball fields and the soccer fields, if we can get a grant. Um, we would expect if somebody utilizes our fields in the evening, they're gonna have to pay the power bill, so.
But they're willing to.
Yes.
Keep it open for.
They were absolutely willing to give it to us, um, but there would be cost sharing, yep.
Okay, I wanted to mention that, that there is options, different options for the pickleball. And so I just wanted to lay that out, all the options. Also, that brings to point the need for a rec director. If we were to go there out with the schools and if we do anything with the pool. We have, I guess this is appropriate, we've discussed this with the, our. We have, I guess this is appropriate, we've discussed this with the, our current, uh, what do you call events, or Jet Smith and so on, has been taking care of the act, um, programs, and because this position is in ordinance, it is currently in ordinance, but it hasn't, you know, we haven't filled that. And, uh, it's either committee or individual. And to do these programs, if you have somebody that's in charge of the pool and you have somebody charging the programs, committee, I don't think can do that. It's gotta be an individual that's dedicated to that position, so. That's something that we're going to have to, uh,
What was Jet's feelings on that? She was open, she was happy?
So, Jet says, officially, that's my title, wh- and I said, well, it's one of your titles. She's our events, um, I don't know what her official title is, but she does ve- events, she runs the rec program that we have, which right now consists of soccer, some basketball, and, and, and she does the pickleball that we have, the three courts that meet in the ca- the county tourism building, county tourism, fairgrounds building. Jet manages that, so we talked to Jet and said, listen, if we were to do this and move forward with, um, what we're, what we're looking at is somebody who could be a rec director, also in charge of a pool, um, and a full-time position, um, we're, we're cognizant of, of making sure that we can fund this position. And Jet already does events and all that stuff, uh, rec is like a, an add-on to what she does, she does a great job with it. But what we're talking about is more than she could do by herself, also doing all the events. So we said, what we're probably considering is a, is a separate position. And she said, if you honestly feel like that's what's best for Perrin, I'll get behind it. That's, I think I quoted her pretty close, right?
I think so. Okay. Um, one thing I wanna emphasize, we have these three parks up here, the city has other parks, the heritage park, the park at the library, the, you know, the main street, whatever you wanna call it. Is there any other, I think there's those. And th- th- the emphasis that I wanna make is, just like I said, in this area, that we need some volunteerism. We need volunteerism with all the parks. That's the only way we're gonna be able to, we have, we're blessed with some great parks. And people want them, they need them, and hopefully, they'll step up and help support us so that we can maintain these parks and develop them. The Binks Parks is gonna take a lot of work, a lot of development. The, out to the baseball fields, this area, it's gonna take some work. And we got, you know, so I just emphasize, we have a lot of parks and we need a, you know, we need the help, so. Uh, is there any questions on any of those parks?
Well, there's your better picture, Dave.
Oh, okay, well, sorry. So, yeah, this, this one shows that, that, you know, kinda the complex, here's your, this is where the, the, uh, retention pond is right now. There's this strip right across the front that was left, and this is the area that could be used for pickleball, pump park, whatever. This area up here is the area that could also be incorporated into pickleball or, or pump park, I guess, whatever, but pickleball in that could be, it worked in conjunction with the county possibly. Um, but this area here does have the restroom and the parking and so forth. So, anyway, now, oh, okay. Let's, that's, that shows you a picture of the pool full. The old pool. That's.
And when was this picture taken?
That picture was taken Wednesday. Let's see, maybe Thursday, yesterday.
But this week is what you're saying?
This week, this week.
Yesterday.
Yeah, Wednesday or Thursday, I can't, anyway. All right, I'm gonna turn this a little, cause I don't know what I'm getting from back here, so. Anyway, I'm gonna make a statement. Parks and pool takes a lot of money to operate. Cities do not make money on them either. They are a service to the community, they are used by all demographics of the community and need to accommodate and facilitate all of these different needs. Losses can be minimized with proper management. Whether you operate an old pool or construct a new pool, there is a cost associated with the operation of the pool as shown in the feasibility study. The city has always and will always contribute to parks and pools, this is a service provided to the community. There has been a, an extensive journey in the process of working towards the construction of a new pool. Uh, I don't know, I don't know how to work this thing. There it is, okay, there's the history of this project, this, there, there has been extensive journey in the process of working towards the construction of a new pool. This timeline that's on the screen does not do justice to the time and passion given to this project. It is like the birth and death dates on a headstone with a dash in between. A lot happens to an individual's life between those dates represented by that dash. The same is true with the events related to the new pool project. I envisioned a new pool project unifying the community, not dividing the community. I envis- I envisioned excitement and happiness. It has been very diff- difficult and depressing. I know all involved have taken this responsibility very seriously with passion. As I know stress and events related to the new pool project contributed to me having a stroke. I'm fine now and have been blessed to do, and do not regret any of my efforts towards this project. As I know everyone else who has been involved feels the same. This project is far from dead, I didn't mean to insinuate that it is dead. The opposite is true, the problem is and has been, we were led down the wrong path and given the perception, this was the only improper way to pursue this project. We have learned this is not necessarily true. The pool presented to us was not what was intended. I would humbly ask that everyone please remove the term, and I hesitate stating the phrase, the eleven million dollar aquatic center from their description of the pool Perrin is pursuing. This phrase is not productive, but rather counterproductive. This was an amount presented to us. As stated, this path taken was the wrong path for Perrin. This is this does not mean that there are no other paths to pursue, but rather, we know what paths not to pursue and what paths we should pursue. We have not wasted time and resources, just the opposite. We now have a wealth of knowledge and resources to use to accomplish the project. The greatest being the people of Perrin itself. I believe the residents of Perrin, unifying in this project, combining all their resources, talents, abilities, and efforts can travel down the path that is right for Perrin and build a new pool. This is how the old pool was built along with many other earlier projects the community built together. It will take time, the time may not be right at this moment, but it will happen and needs to happen. This project should be pursued persistently and passionately until it is accomplished. I had a call today, just coming to this meeting from Tom, coming to this meeting from Tom Anderson, who's a pool specialist that we've engaged with. And he says that he uh, that he's available and would be willing to come and, and help in the planning process on an individual basis to help this happen. During the process of working towards a new pool, the interim gap stop, as the mayor likes the term to use, concept of opening the old pool was not ignored, but rather was looked at objectively. The mayor had professional individuals and entities inspect the pool and present their ideas and recommendations. The trust, who is the property casualty and liability insurer for municipalities and the health department, have looked at the pool multiple times. Thursday, March thirtieth, Clint Free from the health department looked at the pool of this year. Looked at the pool again, this time, he gave a positive indication with a punch list, as Dan would describe, that the pool could be reopened. Mike Stagg from the trust looked at the pool again on Friday, August twenty-first, less than a week ago of this year.
April twenty-first.
April, I'm sorry, excuse me, thank you, Dan. He also gave a positive indication that the pool could be opened with a conditional punch list. So with that, Dan started cleaning the trash out of the pool on Saturday, April twenty-second. The city crew started cleaning the rest of the trash out on Monday, the twenty-fourth, along with starting the pump to pump the dirty water out. The city crew finished pumping the dirty water out Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. They then started filling the pool with clean water. The city crew finished filling the pool on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth with clean water. The city crew started the equipment up also on Wednesday. The equipment seemed to function fine. I'll go back to that. That was probably Wednesday. Even today, Dan had the gas turned on and checked the heater out. It, it works. Kim Skinner, a pool expert, checked the pool out today. Everyone was positive about opening the pool. Also, a cement restoration contractor was contacted about the deck, which was one of, which is, was one of the major items on the punch list. It should be noted that two major features at the pool will have to be eliminated in order to open the pool. The diving board and the kiddie pool. There are punch lists in addition to the original, there are punch list items in addition to the original report of the trust, but they're minor. Tom Anderson said he would help, um, if it was needed necessary as we work through this process with the, as, because he was interested in working with us on a new pool, he continues to and expressed that he wants to help us do that in the design. But he would be willing to help, yeah, as far as if we wanted to do any revisions, like if we have to remove the kiddie pool and work out something that could be there, like a water feature or something. I have been very impressed with what has been accomplished in less than a week by Dan Jessen and the city crews. This shows it is possible when everybody unifies, unites in a common effort and goal. I feel we are ready to move forward with this interim gap stop solution to our pool's issue. We have an opportunity now that we did not have before. By closing the pool, we have some funds available to put towards repairs and construction that otherwise would not be available. In res- in retrospect, possibly the, the timing of the pool, of closing the pool could be considered a mistake. Now, we have the opportunity and options to move forward as a community to pursue the goal of a new and be- and of new and better amenities and meet the present needs of the community. Time is of the essence if this is going to be possible this year. With what has happened and taken place, I, therefore, I'd like to make a motion. I note that the city proceeds with the process of opening the old pool, contingent on the final approval of the health department, also contingent on the final approval of the trust, also contingent on the equipment functioning properly, also contingent on being able to staff the pool, also contingent on securing the necessary labor, contractors, or volunteers, especially volunteers, to accomplish the necessary construction and repair work. Also contingent on securing fun- the funding, let's see, se- secure funding procured for the construction of the new pool. This funding will be used for the necessary construction and repairs to open the old pool. Also contingent on this being able to be worked through the budget.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
I would open it up for discussion now.
Okay, I was gonna say, I don't know if you're wanting me to do that. So we're opening it up for discussion, and I'm, I'm already, you know, the kiddie pool and things, I know those are hard, but one of the big costs is now it's required that you have a completely separate system for a separate body of water. So because that kiddie pool is attached to our pool with this equipment and the water is exchanged between the two, we can't keep it that way, so the other, you know, the other option would be to put in an additional set of equipment just for the kiddie pool, and that takes us into a lot higher costs, right?
The thing is, if we're gonna do it this year, that's the decision now, because we will not be able to do it unless we move. There's all these contingencies that can be discussed, and everybody can, we can discuss them and make everybody aware, but it's the timing, if we don't move now, we won't get it open this year. And if the people, the public want it, then that's what they should have. But I'm not saying we kill the new pool concept. This is an interim gap, however you wanna describe it, stop, 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 gap measure that we, that, I think the citizens need and deserve, but we also need to not use full diligence in trying to do what's in Perrin's best interest and get a facility that they, they need. But this will give them the opportunity, at least now, to have something. And we have the opportunities, like I described, by closing it, has provided us some funds and opportunities, hopefully, to be able to pay for this that we wouldn't have been able to before to do it. These things are mandated, those items that have to be removed by the trust and the insurance. And there are some, as you say, punch items, but I think they're doable, don't you, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, before, literally, when was, when was it, Sharon, when we were there looking at the, with the gas guy? I mean, that, I mean, still, you're talking this afternoon, we, there was a, still another big unknown. Until all of these unknowns have been answered, you know, there, I gotta say something funny, there was these little kids on bikes. I was there with half the, the public works guys and they're all excited, you know, we're inside and here come these kids on bikes. What are you doing in the pool? Could you tell us? And, and I said, no, it's a big secret. And, um, but literally, I mean, a week ago, we didn't know, there's big unknowns. There's still dollar amounts that are unknown, but I'll tell you one thing that we really, it's pleasantly shocked us as we've looked at this option. Um, the, the, the old body of the pool is not in that bad of shape. The health guy said, I expected to see this and just, he, he goes, I expected, I don't remember the word he said, Armageddon or something. He goes, this old girl's not too bad. And then he says, but you gotta do this, 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 this. Um, some of the things that were, that were kind of large deal breakers, you know, we didn't really think, what if we, like the kiddie pool being part of the bigger body of water, that's a hard no. Well, we don't have to have a kiddie pool. And that's gonna be horrible, but maybe there's a substitute thing that we could do in there, but we gotta look at that. And who knows what that could cost? The diving board, a hard no from the insurance company and the health department was like, maybe technically, if you shorten it, maybe, but the, the, the insurance, the trust is like, it's gotta go. It's, well, and I'll just share with you, the trust said, if you have an accident in here and somebody is seriously injured or dies, we've had to cover a death at a pool before and it is something your community would not ever wanna go through. We do not wanna insure that diving board. And not that the diving board is the only way that somebody could get hurt, but it is definitely actually one of the bigger risks. Um, the, the cement, you know, we've been operating under the understanding, we'd have to tear out the entire cement and replace it. That's expensive. We don't have to do that. There's actually other options, um, and we, we met with, with a guy who has an option. They go in, they grind everything down, they fill up the gaps. You can't have anything more than a quarter of an inch, um, trip hazard. They could do a polyureth- uh, a year-
Do they lift it?
They, they lift it, they, they do self leveling stuff and then they actually put a coat. It's seamless. It's the exact same stuff, the exact same, not result, but the same stuff they put in the, um, the bottom of the gazebo that we talked about in Lyons Park. It's a different actual coating. That, that stuff is really, really rough because they want attraction in there. But this is the same stuff, only not so rough on bare feet. But he said, health departments love this because the traction is really good with kids and, and adults with wet feet walking around on it. And he said, I'll give you a ten year, absolute ten year warranty and he goes, you probably get fifteen years out of it. Um,
Dan, also-
I wanna talk about, yeah, go ahead.
Also, today, it was discussed about the bottom of the pool and how we can smooth that out.
Yeah, the bloody toes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Kim Skinner, pool expert, is like, I'll tell you exactly how you treat this. Instead of an acid wash, you do this way to polish it, sand it, polish it. And, um, he said, I'll be there, I'll help you, my back, I can't do it, but I can definitely help. Um, I wanna point out a couple of things. One, the pool itself, the actual pool, is probably in better condition than the pool building. Um, when Dave says volunteers, I, I mean, we're talking, if we're to get this thing up and running, it is all hands on deck. We're gonna have a punch list, um, that is the big things, right down to the small things. Um, and there's gonna have to be painting, we're gonna, somebody's throwing a rock through one of the windows. Um, inside, I think a lot of people said nasty. Like it, it looks pretty, pretty nasty inside and there's gonna, that's a lot of elbow grease. Um, volunteers could go a really long way. Um, one of the things that I think we should consider, and this is like, you're talking about playing with vintage, you're talking about playing with heritage. Um, right now, from a sheer dollars standpoint, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside. We have an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside of impact fees that was set aside for the new pool. You can use impact fees to build a new pool that's bigger because of the community is growing. That's how impact fees work. You can't use impact fees on an old pool to do remodeling or to improve quality of service. The idea occurred to me, if we increase the size of the pool without increasing the size of the pool, I'll tell you how that works, we could actually have three hundred thousand dollar budget instead of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. What I'm saying is this, under Utah law with a, with a pool, you're only allowed to have so many people in the facility at a time. If we open up the pool by maybe opening up one of the walls and having some outside, like a lot of these, um, communities, if you go to Canab, they have one. If you go to Og- Orem, Scara Park, they have kind of a community pool in a park concept. Um, if we were to put up outside fencing and, and open up the walls or one wall and put in some, um, some cabanas, some lawn chairs, things like this, so that you can have more people in the facility, that's, that's legal under Utah law because they realize that not everybody is a bather, they use the word bather. Um, if you have more space and more things to do for non bathers. So, let's just use round numbers. Let's say that the pool is capable by capacity, like literally defined by the square footage. It's not a, it's a, it's a mathematical equation, how many we can technically allow into the facility. Let's say that number is two hundred. I don't know what it is.
It's close to that.
Close to two hundred. We could probably open up this space, reimagine this pool and have some, some more lounging space, things like this. And we may be able to allow three hundred people into the pool grounds, right? And so you could have cabanas with shade, um, you could have, maybe you have some really nice ones that you could rent for the day or we could do some things like that. But that means now you're actually opening up one or more walls and those walls are part of the character of the pool, right? So, but that would basically unlock another hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, of impact fee money. Um, and I feel pretty confident in that. I don't know if our attorney does, but I think I feel pretty confident that that would be something that would be defensible. Because you're now expanding this, the size of the pool, even though we actually haven't changed the actual pool. Um, this is gonna, the costs are gonna add up in a hurry. We don't know yet all the costs. We haven't got to that point yet. We've just wondered, will the health department actually allow it? Or are their demands gonna be a deal breaker? They weren't. Is the insurance company gonna actually allow it? Are the demands gonna be a deal breaker? They weren't. The next question is, will this thing even hold water? And will the equipment even work? Or does it could be really expensive? Well, the pool's holding water. I mean, we're gonna put some marks on it and see if it settles. But the equipment all fired back up. We're gonna have to make changes inside. We have to redo the electrical. We have rusted out, you know, door frames. We have to make a door that automatically closes on the outside. Like paint shingles, like roofing shingles. There is just a lot of work. Get rid of the diving board. They've said, well, maybe we could put in a, like one of those climbing walls that overhangs. That could be a feature. We could put in a slide, not, not a major slide, but like a, a little slide you climb that has a twisty that drops into the water. We could put in some sort of a water feature. But to get all of this stuff done, or get enough, or some of that stuff done, you're talking a, a big heavy lift.
But I think if the people want it bad enough, that's what it's gonna take, is the volunteers and the help to do it. And so, you know, if we put this out there, we're asking for everybody's support and help to make this happen, if that's what, if that's what you want.
I-
They'll do it.
They will, but I-
They'll do it.
But we're gonna have to have help.
It will happen.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. And I, you know, I'm gonna just, this has been hard for me. I hope you understand. This has been, I, very hard for me. But I want what's best for Parowin and Parowin as a whole. I really do. And I thought a new pool was the way, but there, you know, but we learned. We have, don't think that we haven't learned and we can't push that forward. But we need to look right now, if this is what people want. I'm, I'm here and I'll, I'll beg your forgiveness if you're gonna hold it against me, but I have tried to, I'm trying to always be open minded, whether you know it or not.
Hey.
You talking about the old pool or the new pool? Okay.
So we probably shouldn't get into public discussion because we really need to have council discussion?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm too passionate. Like I said, I had a stroke, but I'm okay.
Well, I'd like to make at least my comments made and maybe even a motion. I-
We have a motion.
Have another one? We already had one.
There's a motion that's been made and seconded. And then he called for a discussion of his motion.
Well, okay, I'll just, I'll just give you my opinion. I also went in and talked to Dan Monday. It was Monday morning because of all the comments on Facebook. And I've always been for the, for the pool, a pool. When it got to be so expensive, we had to work something out. I told Dan we needed to make a comment to the public and he, his comment to me was, I would like to wait for two weeks until we have more information, meaning how much it's gonna cost, the concrete and everything, so we know. And I would like, this is just my opinion, I would like to wait two weeks and if we get the information sooner than two weeks, we could call a special counsel and have it voted on then.
There's contingencies here that address that. There's all the contingencies are here.
I don't want to get the residents all up that we're going to do this and then all of a sudden we-
Why not? They've sat here for how long and waited for something to happen?
Because we've done it for three years.
Huh?
We've done it for three years.
That's right. So let's do something and move on. There's, there's contingencies here? I'm sorry, I said I would not lose control. I tried to put in the contingencies that we need to address. And unless those contingencies are met, this motion will not carry forth. It's that simple. The contingencies based the budget, the cost, being able to find labor, help, everything. I think if you wanna put more contingencies. Go ahead. I think it, I think it's time. This has been a very hard road. It's not over. This is, like we said, an interim, a gap stop. But I think it is a good thing to do. And I think that we, with what I've seen happen in the last week, shows me it is possible. I was concerned. I didn't think that the, there'd be a failing somewhere with the equipment, with something. Everything seemed to come together. And so I think we need to move forward based on the knowledge we have. I mean, like Tom Anderson, he told me, if the health department has approved this tentatively, we don't need to get involved as a professional pool consultant. He says, you can do this. You can use your ingenuity to come up with the water features, the, you know, whatever, the slide, the whatever, and take care of this on your own. He's willing to give some input if we have some questions. But I think we're capable to reach out to the public. Get, they've committed, they said it'll be done. I'm gonna hold Dave to it. Okay. It'll be done. If we let the public participate, having vested interest, have, you know, just be involved and be part of it, know we can't do it without them. It'll happen. I know it will. And I'll tell you, this was my, and Dan said, the one guy, the contract, the concrete guy, he asked, when you want this? I said, we want to have a July fourth opening celebration.
And he laughed.
He laughed and I says, I'm not laughing.
He did. And this was just a guy to give us an opinion, not a, not official kid yet.
I think it's possible. Maybe not, there might be some things that we won't get done. Maybe we'll have to do them in the fall, whatever, but I think we can get it open. I really do. I think we can get it open. And if we have to finish up on some other things later, so be it, but I think we can get it open. Meet the health department's requirement and the trust requirement. And I think we can work it through the budget process. That's what I said, having the, it closed, two edged sword. And I'll take responsibility, but being closed did give us some opportunity to some funding to do some of these things that had to be done. There, these things were required and that contributed. There was reason. I did not put up the, the one thing, the, the statement from the trust that says the decision by this council to close this facility and, and move towards building another facility was the right thing to do. Now, they've given us kind of a different indication in that same thing. They even says we should demolish the old pool because liability issues. Cause of that water's, that can, you know, condense or consolidates in there with precipitation and we have to go pump it out all the time. They said, these kids, if you guys sell-
We have, we need to be having a council discussion and then call-
All right.
So I feel like you're kinda losing-
I think the public needs to know though.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second. So all those in favor, if there's not any further discussion.
Vote? Aye.
Aye.
No. I would think we need to wait two weeks. I'm all for it, but we need to wait and get more information.
Yep, let's just kick it down the road, two more weeks.
That's not what we're doing at all.
It's exactly what we're doing, Sharon. It's exactly- Hey, we don't, we're in the middle of a vote. We're kind of through the discussion. Sorry, I didn't mean to put my hand up to you.
I will say aye, but I wanna also know publicly that that unanimous, or decision to close the pool was not unanimous. I'm making sure.
Matt Gill voted against closing the old pool. The only one.
Okay, we're in the middle of a vote, so.
I think that there's more to be done. I vote no.
Okay, so we have three ayes and two noes, so the motion carries. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving now from the action meeting into the work meeting, we have item number sixteen, the water agenda. On water agenda, Grant Cox.
I'm celebrating my forty fifth year here in Parowin. My fortieth year at Mount, since I built, started Mountain View Ranch. And I think I've been here for forty three years tonight.
Hmm, yeah.
I really wanted to complain about our pressurized water system. For the last two years, we've prayed, we've fasted. We've had multiple church meetings to try to mitigate a terrible drought that we've gone through. We have a fabulous winter. We've got two hundred and seventeen percent water uh, pack on the mountain and it's all going down the drain. We're not getting anything in our pressurized system. And I'll make this real short because we've taken up a lot of time. I see right now, we have the inability to make decisions. So I'm gonna make a motion that we privatize the pressurized system, get it off of the backs of the citizens, or the city and the city maintenance. Let's privatize it, take it away from the city and put it in a private contractor so that we can get our pressurized system. Take it away from the city and put it in a private contractor so that we can get our pressurized system. I just spent three hundred and some dollars having fertilizer put on a week and a half ago thinking I was gonna get water. And now I'm told we're not even gonna get it till after the second of May or some, with everything else that's gone on, I don't know when it is. So that's my thing. I just want to make one other comment. I am so happy about the pool down the street. I think that's one of the greatest things that's happened to Perilone. It's gonna take the pressure off of my pond. We get two or three people, maybe five people a month, a week, that come over, spread a blanket out around my pond, have no idea who the hell they are, and have a picnic. Luckily-
Where do you live?
They've been pretty good folks. And, and we, uh, they've cleaned up their mess. They even take it clear across the courtyard to the garbage can. Haven't left it out there. And they haven't taken any of my fish. So, thanks for this auxiliary pond. It helps me out. Uh, the grass is gonna go dead because we don't have any pressurized system because we're unable to manage getting the pressurized system on. That's pretty sad. Thanks.
Hey, I want to respond to that. The decision was actively made. We're, we've been working overtime to get ready for a flood. Our, our crews have been busy. Um, we've had the wettest year we've had in a long time. The decision was made to, to, to allow it due to priorities. Um, I'm, I apologize. And I, I talked to the crew and I said, "When is a good time that we could, that we could do this?" And the date was picked, which was originally April twenty-fifth. Um, Kelly and, um, contacted me and said, "We've got some issues that we've just found out that we've had to fix. If we turn it on, we're gonna have a problem. We need to kick it back a week." So we did. You call it mismanagement, but it's reality. I apologize. We've talked about actually permanently shifting the dates in, maybe, maybe not, to do some recharge. I don't know if that'll ever happen, but we can communicate. We put it on social media and then we had to change it because we had equipment that was, it was gonna have a problem. And I don't know exactly what it was, but I just wanted to defend a little bit. Management, I mean, privatize it? I, I don't get it.
Well, I, every year they shut it off earlier in the, in the fall.
Go look at Lions Park. It's greener than it ever been.
Every year, they, every year they, they seem that they don't know when they're gonna turn it on. It gets turned on. And, and rightfully so. We've had a drought. Okay? We've used everything from the General Authority down to the Secretary and the local Lord. We've prayed and we've fasted and we've done everything and the Lord answered our call. Now, I can get clear water for you. You tell me what color you water you want. You want, tell me what temperature you want. I'm gonna pray and fast and I'll get, try to get the church to help. I think you're gonna have to start paying a little more tithing though to get that one on. Folks, just, just get us our water. That's all I have. No big, no big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now moving to item number- Oh, good night.
Good night.
Um, item number seventeen, reports, updates, old business follow-up, um, by elected officials and staff. Wanna start on?
Yeah, uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, no meetings that I attended, but, uh, Callie, could you pull up? I don't know if any of you have been to the Veterans Monument, but, uh, the Perilone veterans paid for the six plaques that were added to the, the, uh, west side of the monument. Uh, Cold War, Iraq, Syria, global war on terror, Afghanistan and Kuwait, to go along with the other ones. Uh, also, the veterans have, uh, contacted, uh, for Landscape Rock to, to pay for that area around that's been cleared out. Uh, that should hopefully, fingers crossed, hopefully be done by Memorial Day and have that Veterans Monument all straightened out.
Thank you.
Um, we did have power board. We discussed a lot of that, so I'm not gonna go in big detail. We did a little bit before on that as the solar billing discussion. Uh, we did the discussion on that as far as, we did not come to any agreement on that. That's just for billing as far as if the PCA threw there, right, Jeremy? And we just kinda, uh, get a, kudos to the, uh, Perilone Fire Department. They did some training last night, uh, with all three departments and, uh, it was good. If you saw, um, well, there's two times, Liflight landed twice, but, uh, last night, then also Gold Cross Amets there and the air med was there with, uh, their helicopter too. And just some training, how to, to land and, uh, landing zones and, and just, just basically rub shoulders with them because they will be working with, uh, them if, if emergency arises. Uh, and, uh, I said, "All three departments did," but Perilone did a really good job of that, so.
And power board too, we've talked enough about it tonight and that is all I have. Thank you. If you call that happening.
Okay, so last week we had, um, a theater board meeting and I thought that it went great. I, we've got a lot of new members to the board, um, that were placed on that. And man, it was nice to have an open discussion with everybody and get all their thoughts and feelings for the theater in Perilone. Um, Greta Adams was elected secretary. Callie, make sure you note that. Oh, you're right. You're right. Just kidding. Shelley Porter is the secretary. So, um, they're wanting to do a couple of plays every year, just really ramp that up so that the theater is being used and utilized and it was just a really great meeting. And that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Uh, we discussed Arbor Day, so just remind everybody Arbor Day tomorrow at one o'clock in front of the high school. And, um, I attended the League of Cities and Towns meetings in St. George last week and there was some good, really good information and I appreciated it. But one concern is, in my opinion, the encroachment of our legisla, legislature on the cities and the counties. And there's gonna be a lot that we're gonna have to deal with as far as, uh, land use and different ordinances and things. I just wish they complain, they complain about the Fed's encroachment on the state and the state does it the same to the cities and counties and I wish they'd just leave us alone. And stay, I wish they'd meet every other year and use one year to clean up their mess from the year before and then leave it alone. But anyway, I always say too much. Um, I'm gonna let, uh, uh, Larry Zajac report on the planning and zoning. He's offered to do that for me tonight and I appreciate that. He's the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and, and council members. Um, in the eighteenth, in the, uh, yeah, April, April nineteenth, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, um, we, one of the things that we approved was a boundary adjustment, uh, for the property that is, let's say, let me think about that. Southwest of the, uh, exit seventy-eight on I-15. And so that's right along Main Street and so that was, that consisted of three parcels at the time.
Excuse me, Larry. It's about seven fifty north, isn't it?
Yeah, just, just, uh, north of seven fifty north is, was the boundary adjustment. That said, there was three parcels there. One was landlocked and unusable and that property boundary was adjusted down to two parcels that made, made them a little bit bigger. But it was a fairly routine thing and so we finished with that and that was approved. Um, the commission also discussed the next steps required for a billboard ordinance that we'd been working on. It's now been through legal. Um, as written, that would permit, uh, billboards in Perilone City along the I-15 corridor. Um, however, before we can move forward on that, there needs to be a public hearing. And so it's not gonna go anywhere until we get a date set for a public hearing and we'll decide what to do from there. Um, the commission also discussed a request to rezone property at the location of the Crimson Hills Motel. It's, it actually consists of three parcels. They're currently zoned agricultural and the request is to rezone that property to commercial. We didn't discuss that in detail because it also requires a public hearing before we can do that. So pending the public hearing, we'll make a recommendation on, on what you folks should do or what we think you folks should do in that regard. Um, and that was pretty much it. The public hea, uh, one more thing, sorry. The, uh, public hearing dates haven't been determined yet. Once they're decided, they'll be published as they should be for citizens to be able to attend those hearings.
Larry, will, will that be on the public input we, on your meeting or would it be on the council meeting? Or do you don't decide it?
Well, we're in discussions about that. We are kind of out, as a, as a city, we are a bit out of compliance with state code. So state code pretty much indicates that the Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings before it makes a rec, a recommendation to the city council. Our city code says that the city council will hold a public hearing and it doesn't really talk much about planning and zoning doing that. So I'm currently in, or will be in discussions with Dan about how we want to proceed with that and, uh,
Larry, some of this involves some of those changes from the legislature on land use.
I don't know about these, this particular one. We've been out of, out of whack with that one for a while.
Okay, 'cause theirs is on subdivisions and things, so.
Yeah, yeah, this, anyway. So we'll work through all that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I appreciate you helping me out on that.
You're on.
Why did you look so excited?
But I'm gonna scare the crap out of everybody and I apologize. And I apologize if I got a little defensive just now with Mr. Cox. Um, the reality of it is, if you imagine, th, this is the snow tail site at Bryanhead. The dark red line is the water equivalent, the snow water equivalent that's at Bryanhead right now. So, we're all feeling pretty good because the flood channel has been running water but, you know, hasn't flooded and stuff. And so I think we're feeling a little bit of a-
Security?
Security that, that we've weathered the storm. Um, this was the high point and, and why I was getting a little defensive was, um, we've had so much water, I mean, what was it, three weeks, three and a half weeks ago? We had twelve inches of snow. We made the decision, we've got high priorities and protecting the city is the highest. If that water comes off fast enough, we're all flooded. A one-hundred-year event would cascade water through the streets. It wouldn't flood every single house, but it would overtop, it would, the bridge wouldn't be able to handle it. It's a big concern. The flood channel was not ready. We rented a track hoe, we borrowed a track hoe. I haven't taken a day off in five weeks, except for I took last Sunday off. It was nice. I'm not preaching anything other than our lawns and our gardens have had, it's so wet you could hardly walk in them. We made the active decision, let's delay opening the, the irrigation to the city. And I know that people care and I know they want to do their gardens. And I feel bad that, that Mr. Cox is, that he, that he fertilized. Um, I really do, I really do. But my point is, is the, if you look at this snow total, the last snow that we got was right here when it bumped it back up a little bit. You can't really see down there maybe. But this is where we got the twelve inches. Um, so if you look at January, this is what really started to stress me out in January, was all of a sudden it started climbing. And it was like every three days, we had another storm. We, we stockpiled riprap because we wanted to work on the flood channel, but it was so wet, you couldn't take a piece of heavy equipment off the, off the, the hardened surface. It would sink to the ground because there's so much moisture. And of course, all that's going up on the mountain. So this is the visual I want to do. That right there says that we're at thirty-one inches of water. That is two and a half feet of water that completely covers that whole mountain. Now just imagine two and a half feet of water covering this entire room. Now put that on the mountain. Now I'm gonna show you what that looks like. This is a, all of the past years. This is now state of Utah. So this first one was, was, was Bryanhead. But this is what the, the Bryanhead one looks like as well. This is the previous high. This was the nineteen eighty-three year where, where they've, you know, turned Main Street in Salt Lake and State Street into a river. Um, I want you to notice the slope of that line right there. Um, in every one of these scenarios, that water has got to come off the mountain within the next month. Historically, it is gonna come off every single time. It's gonna be done. And not that you won't still have water running down the mountain, but the, but the majority of the snow melt occurs. Um, in, in most years, so the green is the average year. You start having snow melt right around April first. And in the average year, it's mostly off the mountain by June fifth, right? Um, we haven't really started to eat into that snowpack on the mountain yet. Well, that was me. No, you're good. So, I am not trying to scare of anybody. I'm trying to say this has been the highest priority of public works for the city. Um, we have been stockpiling sandbags. We have upgraded the flood channel. It has never looked this good in a long time. And I can say never because out past six hundred, it literally was just irrigation canals. And now there's a dedicated flood channel, almost all the way out. There's actually a little bit of work that still needs to be done. I'm feeling tons better about things. But if it all comes at once and it's more than, you know, about twelve hundred cubic feet per second, we're gonna have some problems, but it's better than it's really ever been. I really, really hope and pray that it will come gradually. I would actually like to see that flood channel three quarters of the way full, every single day until the water's gone without it rushing, right? So I'm not trying to scare anybody. I'm just trying to say we're, we're in this false sense of security, but all that water is still up there. Um, we've, the only time we've really had high, high water shed events was in two thousand five, um, two thousand, um, nineteen eighty-three. And really, our system weathered the two thousand five event pretty good, except for six hundred west out where we had a lot of problems. We've improved that flood channel pretty good. We did have the Bryanhead fire with that scar. But then we had monsoon events that did some, some pretty big damage in twenty seventeen. This is a totally different type of a thing unless it rains up on top. One other thing I want to point out. Um, so this is a, the snow tail site, this is different information. We're, we're still as of right now at a hundred and ninety-nine percent of normal. The observed snowpack is seventy-five inches. When I was talking about water, I'm talking about the snow water equivalent. So you have on average about seventy-five inches of actual snow. You have about thirty-one inches of water in that snow. But there's this number right here, which is a snow water equivalent percentage. It's, that number keeps climbing as it does. Because what happens is your snow, as it melts, it starts to become more and more and more like a liquid and more and more compressed. When it hits about forty-five percent snow water equivalent, it just starts to kind of liquefy, right? And that's usually when your temperatures are up. If it's really cold, it'll stay frozen. But, you know, it'll be about sixty on the mountain, um, on Sunday. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that it actually really starts to kind of move that water out, um, and, and we can get that water reduced. Um, what we, what would be disastrous would be a bad rainstorm. I was really stressed Sunday night. I drove around till midnight watching the channel up and down the canyon, watching, Coal Creek actually has live CFS data in Cedar, so I'm watching that because I figure that we share the same mountain. Um, luckily, all those rainstorms did not rain up on top. Had they done, we would have seen some, some flooding, so. Anyways, again, I, my goal is not to scare everybody. It's just, we need to be vigilant. Um, we are keeping an eye on that channel. Um, we have, we have a few things. Um, if the water reaches a certain level at the four bay, it will alert our- Um, if the water reaches a certain level at the four bay, it will alert our Public Works. So that we know, hey, the water has just barely, it, it's, it's in our telemetry system. It will alert Public Works. Um, we will get out, we will watch it. Um, we have a, we have a trackhoe, we have loaders, um, we have support from the county, we have sandbags. We will keep an eye on it when it starts running high to see if it starts to, you know, deviate from its, from course. Or maybe it's gonna breach a levee. We can, we can bolster it. If it does breach a levee, we have sandbags stacked on trailers so that we can get them to a breach quickly as possible. Um, the other thing, I went down, I figured people were gonna come out and think I was vandalizing. I spray painted lines under the Main Street Bridge, from the top, every one foot down. And I've talked to our police department, cause they're, the problem is, is the water will usually peak like at midnight, one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning. So, I've asked Addie, whoever is on patrol, because most of us go to sleep. We should be in bed right now. Um, and, but they're patrolling all night, right? Certainly through the high point. I've asked them, "I want you to check the Main Street Bridge every hour or more and just look and see. And if the water starts to get to a certain line, I want you to call out the cavalry so we can be there and watch it. And if it starts to look like we're gonna have a problem, we can watch it." We can't have our Public Works, everybody on pins and needles for the next month and a half, will burn out, right? But they are already patrolling. I figure that's a second thing besides the, the warning up there. Um, you can ask the mayor and the city council. There's been a few other duties that I've been like, I've, it's been longer for me to return a phone call. If somebody's been wanting a phone call and I haven't called you back, I've been obsessing about getting our city prepared. Um, that's why I got a little feisty with Grant and I, I don't like it when I lose my composure, but I'm like, this is why we've delayed turning on the system. So, anyways, that's what I wanted to say. There was a hand back there.
Do you wanna come up to the microphone?
I'll put the scary one back.
I just had a question really quick because I saw that you guys did some digging right there along the soccer fields,
Yeah.
um, where you're going. I noticed that cars now are starting to park on top of what you guys have done. Do we need to put something so it doesn't ruin the work that you guys have done? Like, people are parking kind of on top of what you guys are doing.
You mean in that ditch where they kinda put-
Yeah, like in that little-
The fence right there?
Yeah, right next to the fence. Like, I wonder if you guys, cause soccer's gonna be starting up, they're starting to, like, just put something in front so people will know to stop so they're not ruining those little ditches.
No, they're fine, that's-
That doesn't matter.
That's even not a, a final, finished, um, design there. Um, when the county redid the, the parking lot, um, of the fairgrounds when they took that over, we all love the parking lot, but it changed the drainage pattern, so all of Gers subdivision and the entire, um, that used, it used to get diverted and go out to three hundred east. It now flows through that parking lot, plus it picks up everything in the parking lot and it goes right down along the, the soccer fields.
Mm-hmm.
Um, everybody knows that we, we actually, the county came in, they, um, they cut the diversion. They put a, how big is that cement pipe? There's a drop box with like a sixty-inch pipe?
At least, yeah.
And, and so that water will turn, so it doesn't, like, literally flood Dave's house. They're gonna also put something there. Um, the city is gonna go in when we have some time. We're gonna improve that, so, because we know that everybody parks on that side and walks through those gates.
Yes.
Um, Justin again, he went in, he put some, some culverts and put some paths so people could walk right now. Um, I would just say-
They're using those to park their cars.
They're using them to park their cars, so we could figure out something to keep them back, but-
Just not, just thought, you guys may wanna know, just of, I hate for your guys' work just to be ruined by one season, especially when you're saying that this is, when this is gonna happen.
So, as long as it stays in the flood channel, um-
Well, you still, also, if it gets wet and they park over it, or it rains up there and they pull over, there are gonna be big old ruts.
They may get, well, they may get stuck too.
Yeah.
And so just if you, like I say, if you even just put something so they know coming up, like, hey, we know that we've been able to park here before, but let's use other places. That might be something.
Yeah, we need to, we, we'd like to maybe do some, some decorative, a solution that both will, will take water and run through there. And it's also convenient for people to, to park there and walk across it and all that stuff. So, we, we needed something because we knew that the, the season was coming fast and, and, um, and, and again, potholes. Can I just, can I say something about potholes? Every city and county that has experienced the winter we have experienced, the roads are in bad shape. And ours are in bad shape. And we know that. Um, we're gonna get the, the, the system back on. Um, like, every day, there is a whole punch list of things that has to be done. There's a lot of maintenance out at the sewer lagoons that has to be done. It's taking all this extra water as well. We have pumps that are going down, we're having problems with. Everybody just assumes Public Works isn't doing everything. They're just sitting around doing nothing. Every given day, you, and you have a grave that has to be dug and you have a water line break and you have, you know, there's a lot of things that get done behind the scenes. Um, we, we know our roads are in bad shape and, and we're gonna get them fixed. And, um, the winter's been tough on them. But all these things are on the list and we know they are and, and, uh, Parowan's awesome. Um, I really hope we don't get tested by a bad flood. I really hope that at the end of the day, the worst that happened was you guys had to sit through my scare tactics and that nothing happened. But it's, the potential is there.
So, this is kinda funny. On the topic of, of potholes, I went to the senior center and had lunch today because I thought they might have input for the active transportation plan. Because the last time I went, they talked about sidewalks and they talked about biking. Um, several people that eat lunch over there bike, ride their bicycles around town. And, you know, so we were talking about those things and I was having them identify intersections they wanted to be sure we addressed as either, um, safety issues or not as possible as they could be. And it was so funny because at first, they, they weren't interacting in terms of putting their, their notes down. And I wasn't, you know, I just wanted to be sure that, that that information, because how many people ride bikes and walk, and walk their dogs? And it turned into a list of all the really bad potholes. I was like, that isn't really the active transportation plan that we're laying out tomorrow. But it was really funny just to hear everyone talking about all the really bad potholes. But we are in very good company with our potholes. Everybody, everywhere has really bad potholes and it's, it's gonna be a, a process for sure. And I, I said, "You know, it might be a year or two on some of these." And I mean, I was being serious. And they said, "Well, as long as we know it's, it's in, you know, it's in, in the process." I said, "It's definitely in the process."
Oh, we're gonna get, we're gonna get, there's a sea, time and season for everything. There's a season for fixing potholes and we'll get on it. I had a tire destroyed on a car. It was like a three hundred dollar tire on a pothole. And, and I went to the county and I'm like, "Is there any way your insurance would replace my tire?" And they said, "No, it's not covered." So, I get it, the pain and suffering of potholes.
The other thing is going to the League of Cities. We had, um, several really good breakout meetings. We had an emergency preparedness meeting and something that was said was, there's the first wave, which is the disaster. And then there's the second wave, which is the volunteers. And so, and that's the second disaster. And so, there were coordinations that they recommended and one was actually getting people registered to volunteer, ones that did wanna volunteer and making lists and creating a system for that. So, I had all the paperwork, um, it was obviously like templates and papers and things sent to me and I haven't had a chance to go through those yet. But there were some really good ideas exchanged and, um, some good ideas for emergency preparedness and a lot of different drills and things that cities had done. And they talked us through different drills that we might think about doing in our city. Um, the seniors are getting ready to do their service day, so I was contacted. I, um, called around and got some service projects. They'll be spending some time in the cemetery, they'll be spending some time, um, at Meeks Pond. They'll also be spending some time in the theater, cleaning the seats, wiping down the seats. So, that'll be coordinated groups of seniors for, um, a few hours on May twelfth, I think, two or three hours. And then the last piece is kind of this overreach of state over municipal government. So, we have a lot of ordinances that we need to address, but it really does become overwhelming very quickly. I mean, we've been working through the billboard ordinance and the hard surfaces ordinances and, you know, those are, everything just moves so slowly and it's really hard to get things where we want them to be. But, um, my recommendation to the, to the league, and it's only because of having, uh, people in my family that are aware of how AI works. So, artificial intelligence and you're able to like put in information and it'll write letters for you and it'll write essays and articles. And it's becoming a really big problem in schools because kids are basically, it's plagiarism, but it's modern-day plagiarism. But at the league, I was saying, "Well, couldn't you do something really basic, like put our, our, our ordinances next to the new legislative ordinances? And then just have that sort out and highlight what we need to look at." And they actually said that was a priority and that was something they were working on. So, I thought that was a good thing to just report because that's been a concern that we've all had, is how do we even tackle that with the legislation changing so quickly? But that's all I have as far as the report, um, on just those things that I went to. Other than that, um, do we have a closed session tonight? Oh, wait, does the staff have anything? Do we have need for a closed session this evening?
Not ten o'clock at night, we don't.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second.
I'm seconding.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.